Okay, welcome. Good evening and thank you for everybody that's here and those that are watching online and on TV. It's our last meeting of June. Hard to believe that we are basically sixty percent, or sixty percent, fifty percent of the way through the year. So, thank you for being here tonight. And ask Assistant City Clerk Thurman to do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Borgans.
Here.
Councilmember Gee.
Here.
Councilmember Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Mazur.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bain.
Here.
Mayor Seibert.
Here.
Councilmember Gittes absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Please rise. Councilwoman Borgans will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It strikes me that at the end of the Pledge of Allegiance, that, and thank you Councilwoman Borgans for doing that, that by the time we see all you again, if you come to our meetings regularly, we will have celebrated the Fourth of July, and I hope you'll celebrate that with us in downtown Redwood City at the parade and various other activities, but if not, I think, hope you'll take a chance, and like other holidays, I hope you'll pause to remember why we actually celebrate it, which isn't to eat as much as we can, and in the old days, blow things up. But I hope you'll take a chance to remember why we celebrate the Fourth of July, and Redwood City, if you've never been, does a great job of celebrating, so thank you for that. We have two special orders of the day. The first one is the Highway 101 Managed Lanes update. I'd like to introduce Joe Hurley and Leo Scott with the San Mateo County Transportation Authority to the podium there, or at least one of them, and come on up for a presentation on the Highway 101 Managed Lanes update. Thank you for being here. Hear me? There we go. That sounds a little bit better. All right, well, thank you for having me. I am going to make an abbreviated version of a presentation that was provided, actually here in this chambers, back on the Fifth of June, to the community that was in attendance at that time. We've done two community meetings in the last month. The first was in the City of San Mateo, City Hall, and then the second one here. So, this will give you an update in brief as to the San Mateo 101 Managed Lanes project, and after I finish my presentation, feel free to ask me any questions that you have. All right, so I've got multiple things going on in the presentation. Is it ready? Almost ready. All right, there we go. All right, so I'm going to cover very, very briefly the problem that exists as we have characterized it on Highway 101, then talk a little bit about the express lane option for those who are not so well-initiated or familiar with express lanes themselves, talk a little bit about some of the specifics of the project, our environmental process, and then finally finish with a little bit of an update on where we're going and what's ahead. All right, so, the first thing to note is that the problem along, within the corridor itself, or within the actual peninsula corridors, is greater than any single project can address. So, the Caltrain Electrification Project is very beneficial, but even it doesn't solve all of the demand for Caltrain itself. In addition to a Caltrain Electrification Project, another project that Samtrans is working on is studying express bus service, which would institute the service again on Highway 101 and make use of this particular project, once we have it completed. Simultaneously with that, VTA is currently in the final design of a two-plus HOV express lane from south of 85 on 101 up to the San Mateo County line. The San Francisco County TA is studying an extension of the 101 managed lanes into the city, so taking what this project, where this project ends off, which is contemplated to be at 380, and then the San Francisco would take it from there all the way into downtown. MTC is also planning to improve and increase the park-and-ride facilities throughout the corridor, as well as around the Bay Area, and then as other municipalities like yourselves are contemplating TDM measures that would also affect the ridership and mode choices within the corridor. So, all of those two collectively would bring about a much greater solution than this single project alone. So, this is one of a suite of projects within the peninsula corridor that is of significance. All right, so, the challenge here is that, in addition to the congestion we have already on the corridor as pictured here in this image, jobs, housing, and population continue to grow in the county and in the Bay Area, and vehicle trips, as a result, are projected to grow by four to seven percent by 2020, and they continue to grow after that. What that results in is that north of Whipple, where we don't have a carpool lane today, is that there is no incentive for people to share a ride. In other words, if you're two, or three, or more in a car or a bus, you have to stick it out through the same traffic that everybody else does. And then finally, as a result of that congestion, cars are avoiding the freeway and using city streets more and more, and so as we have met with the cities, including your own staff here, what we have heard is that there is an increased traffic on the local streets as a result of 101's failure to accommodate the demand. So, what we are trying to do with our project is find a solution quickly. There is a fair amount of will in the transportation community to do this. We are looking to secure both public and political support for the project because we will need additional funding to actually complete the project. We are simultaneously trying to minimize the environmental impacts, which helps us move faster and saves us money, stay within the right-of-way as much as possible, which also saves time and saves money, and then we are trying to find a solution that does not make the congestion worse in the other lanes, the general-purpose lanes, at the same time reducing the commute trips on the local city streets by drawing more traffic onto 101, and then finally, get it built as quickly as we can. So, what would an express lane look like? We call this the Managed Lane Project because an HOV lane is a managed lane, and express lane is another type of managed lane, and in the case of an express lane, what that allows the system to do is allow single occupants, or shall I say, non-HOV vehicles, the ability to buy their way into the lane, to use the unused capacity of the actual HOV lane, as it were, now an express lane. And so, while carpools, buses, and motorcycles would be eligible as free vehicles, others would have to pay to make use of that capacity. What that does is it makes more efficient use of the freeway cross-section, or all the lanes. Now, this slide here shows very briefly some of the success that has been observed, and one of the challenges also that has been observed on a couple of the facilities in California. The first row on the top here shows the 680 Sunol Grade Express Lane, which is southbound from south of Pleasanton down to Nobre. The second line is the I-10 in LA, and the third is I-110 in LA. So, what this shows is that the top line of the two bars is the travel time that existed before, in the HOV lane or the carpool lane, that existed before the advent, or the conversion to an express lane. So, in the case of 680 Sunol and the I-10 in LA, both in the AM and the PM, there was an improvement in travel time, and so you can also see that that correlates with an improved travel time speed. There's actually a travel time differential of three miles per hour, and then one and nine miles per hour on those two facilities. However, in the I-110, it's actually gone in the reverse direction. So, they had a 12.4-minute travel time, now it's increased to 19, and the speed has decreased to 16. The reason for that is not the facility itself, it's the fact that as they have implemented this, or since they have implemented, the demand in the corridor has increased. The population's increased, and the demand for the use of the I-110 has increased such that they've outstripped their ability to handle that capacity in the corridor. The I-10 experienced the same thing, but at the time they implemented the project, they actually added a lane. So, they added the lane, that addressed the added capacity, and then they were able to actually move traffic more efficiently through the express lane that they'd implemented. Happy to answer questions about this, but this is, I think, particularly relevant here because we're talking about whether we want to add or convert an existing lane north of Whipple, and so this just kind of helps you understand what we might possibly see. All right, the project is actually being sponsored and managed collectively by CCG, the SMCTA, and then Caltrans, and Caltrans is the lead environmental agency, the actual design team of which I am a part, I am co-leading with a project manager from Caltrans, is a collection of consultants hired by the SMCTA and then Caltrans staff. The project limits on this slide are from in the south, just south of the county line. We actually run a little bit further south of the county line because we have to transition to the VTA, or from the VTA's facility, all the way up to 380. The red indicates the limits of the current HOV lane, which as you well know, ends at Whipple, and then the blue, the light blue line, indicates where we are proposing to extend that lane, either as an HOV lane or as an express lane. The purpose of the project is six-fold. First, we want to reduce congestion in the corridor to the extent that we can. We want to encourage carpooling and transit use. We want to provide managed lanes for travel time reliability. That travel time reliability is important for encouraging carpooling and transit use. We want to minimize operational degradation of the general-purpose lane, so the solution ideally doesn't make worse what's already out there today. We want to increase person throughput, the same cross-section, more people through that same cross-section, and then to do it, apply technology and design features to help manage the traffic. So, we have four alternatives that are under consideration. The first is a no-project alternative. That project serves as the baseline, that's what we measure the other alternatives against, as well as versus each other. The second alternative is actually an HOV alternative that is created, we're going to extend the existing HOV lane in this alternative, all the way up to 380 by connecting the auxiliary lanes that exist today and making another through lane, and then converting the interior or median lane to an HOV lane. Alternative three extends the HOV lane as an express lane, and it converts the lane south of Whipple to an express lane, and it does that by converting the median lane without doing anything with the auxiliary lanes. So, same configuration there as today, you just take the current number one or median lane and you make it an express lane. In alternative four, we actually create an express lane, but in alternative four, we connect the auxiliary lanes to create the extra lane, and then we convert the median lane into an express lane, and if you need to and you want to, I have some slides that will help illustrate how that works. Some of the challenges associated with these, this is not an exhaustive list, just an illustrative list. In alternative two, the challenge here is that the current volume of HOV2s, in other words, two-person carpools, is sufficient to fill the lane when it opens, and so it would perform much like a general-purpose lane does today for most of the period, peak period, because there's so many HOV2 cars on the road. In alternative three, the challenge here is that we're not adding any capacity. There's no additional lane to handle any additional demand that's growing today and will continue to grow in the years ahead, so we have to move more people in fewer vehicles, which is obviously what we're So, we have to move more people in fewer vehicles, which is obviously what we're trying to do in any of these, but this one is just at a premium. There's limited space today, limited use, and what we're saying is that we're going to make, convert one of those lanes into an express lane and hope everybody else fares okay. In alternative four, we are challenged by the fact that we have to connect to the VTA's two-plus occupancy, and we're saying that we're going to be a three-plus express lane. That's a bit of a challenge. And then, we also have to concern ourselves, well, that happens when we get north of 380 in a three-plus scenario as well. All right, and then in terms of the final selection, so, assuming we finish our study as we plan to, in the November, or November, in the January timeframe, we will circulate the environmental document, we will receive comments, and then we will work our way through a selection process for the final preferred alternative, using criteria such as these. We would be looking at vehicle hours of delay, which are a measure, a measure that we're look, used to determine how much congestion the project would create or not create. We look at travel times. Can we achieve an improved travel time in the carpool or express lane over the general purpose lanes and over what we have today? Can we increase person throughput? Can we get more people through the facility in either one or more of the alternatives, and which one is the best? And then finally, vehicle miles traveled. How many miles does, does the alternative generate in terms of trips? And this is a forecasting exercise, but it helps us understand what the facility overall is doing as a result of the improvements. So, those would get us to a final selection at the end of this schedule here. So, we've had a scoping meeting, and we had that back in October. As I mentioned at the beginning, we've had two community meetings, just held them. The public comment period will be at the time we circulate the document this coming January, and then following that, there'd be a selection of a preferred alternative, followed by the actual environmental clearance later in 2018. And with that, I will end my, my comments and presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. I do have a speaker's card on this. I will take that under public comment, because that's typically what we do for these items. So, I, I will call you in a little bit, because this is, this will come under public comment, because it's, it's not for decision on the agenda, so, go ahead.
Well, thank you for that report. It looked like from that timeline you just showed, so January of next year is when the public will have a chance to, to weigh in on this.
They'll be allowed to make formal comment, correct.
What, what's your thought on the process? Will you be doing town halls? Will it just be online feedback? What do you envision?
A little bit of both. We'll have public meetings. It would be envisioned now that we'd do two, much like we've just done. They'd be more of a public hearing setting and formal comments would be received. And then, we'll probably do some amount of outreach and, and take comments online as well.
Thank you.
Councilman Mazur, and then Councilman Howard after that.
Thank you. First of all, thank you. This is the second time I've seen this presentation today, so, it's very helpful to help me think things through. So, this, this was presented to the Congestion Management and Environmental Quality Committee of CCG earlier today. We had a lot of comments and questions, but one of the things I just wanted to share was some, that we had a more extensive presentation, and I appreciated what we were able to see, the consideration of impacts on our roads that are, the roads that we take to get onto 101. So, travel times on Woodside and all the other roads that have entrances onto 101 are also being considered as, as you're moving through this process and thinking about how to, how to further reduce traffic impacts on, on 101. So, just wanted to make sure that our community knew, knew and understood that. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Howard.
Thank you. I'm so pleased that you're going to be going out to the public for that kind of input, and I thank you for this presentation. We have a lot of communication going on in our city, and I'm hoping that if you could forward it to our staff in the city manager's office, we'd be sure to get it out in our e-newsletter and any way possible, social media, so that people know. Most of your meetings are held, aren't they, in San Carlos? Or are you, you planning to come?
Well, we, the, the SMCTA meetings are in San Carlos. The public hearings don't necessarily have to be in San Carlos. As I said, our community meetings were in San Mateo as well as here, and we'll probably follow that pattern, I think.
And I had a question about, in San Francisco, over the bridge, they have flexible lanes where they're able to move cones to a certain way for traffic coming in one direction or another at different peak times of the day. I was wondering, is that being planned at all?
And on this project in specific, you're talking about?
Yes.
Right, that would be, that would be a, require a movable barrier. That's what they now have on the Golden Gate Bridge. And it would require that the, each of the interchanges be reconfigured to allow the movable barrier, to allow the reversible lane. So, that, that's one restriction, but more importantly, it works well, that, that solution works well when you have traffic in one direction, in one peak period. And unfortunately, in this case, we have two peak directions in each peak period. So, there isn't really any available capacity on the other side of the freeway that you could use in the, in the peak direction. So, while it, while it, it offers a lot of help in certain situations, unfortunately here, it's not applicable.
Thank you. And will there be a way, once this is set up, to monitor, to see how effective it is, if changes need to be made?
With the express lane scenario, yes, definitely it will be, because all of the equipment that is put out to use for tolling purposes monitors the lane, all the lanes, and then prices the, the express lane based on what it, it sees. In addition to that, we'll have cameras out there watching. And then, in an, in an HOV only or carpool-only scenario, like alternative two, we probably wouldn't put all that equipment out there, but we could if, if that were decided.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Borgans?
So, this is exciting. I do have a question about, when you're talking about adding a lane, you did talk about, okay. Is that going to require moving any of the sound walls or?
Great question. The, the, the geometricians or the engineers who have worked on the layout have figured out how to shift the center line in those locations where we need added width to actually get that width within the current cross-section or right-of-way. So, we have a few minor takes that we need, but none of the takes require private property. So, it's, it impacts some of the frontage roads in San Mateo, but other than San Mateo and one, one location in Burlingame, we are not impacting any property.
Okay.
Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Seaver. Thank you for the presentation. In the public document that is going to be available in January of 18, will the document go into the methodology for the surge pricing or peak period pricing, if that is an alternative that is identified as a possibility?
Well, I, I'm, to, to a limited degree, it will describe the pricing, but it won't, it won't necessarily go into a great deal of, a great deal of detail on that, because that's not, the, the pricing scheme is developed in order to manage the lane at a, a consistent level of performance. So, the way it, it gets measured effectively is that it, the, the facility monitors the speeds in the actual express lane to assure that they remain at 45 miles an hour or higher. There are lots of different ways that that algorithm can be developed, and so depending on the contract that you let to perform, to provide that service will determine the actual algorithm that gets used. So, there'll be a characterization, but I, I'm not sure exactly what, what level of detail you're looking for, but it, it won't be down to the, to the precise detail.
That methodology is exactly what I was looking for. So, if, if the desired throughput is, let's say, 45 miles an hour, a possible algorithm would be then to adjust pricing to achieve that 45 mile.
Exactly. So, as, so as the, the number of vehicles in the lane increases and the speeds decrease, the price goes up.
Okay. That's exactly what I was looking for in the public document. Thank you.
Yes, that, that'll be there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
I would ask, through our city manager, that a link to this, the website, especially where people can get information and give information. I assume there's a place on the website people can share their feedback.
Yeah, the website is actually right behind you or on your screens there.
If we can get a link to that on our website through the city, that'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. And again, Adina, I'll get to you as soon as we get to public comment, and you can be the first speaker I call. With that, we are, special order of the day, our second one is a swearing-in of appointed board members, commissioning committee members. I believe we have tonight to swear in, Library Board Member Janet Lawson and Lisa Hicks-Domansky. Are you, you're both here? Come on up. Planning members Ernie Schmidt, Connie Guerrero, and Mohammed Saifdari. I think everyone's here. Do you want everybody all at once, Ms. Thurmond? So, if the three of you could come up as well. Congratulations to all of you. Again, thank you for being willing to serve our community. Good. As long, as long as you raise your right hand and not your left hand, I think everything is good. There we go. Thank you. Thank you all, again, for, most of you for continuing to serve, and Mr. Saifdari for being willing to serve on the first time on the planning commission. That will go to public comment. I'd like to first call Adina Levin, and the second speaker will be Brian Jaffe. Brian, if you could queue up behind her, that'd be great.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Adina Levin, and I'm here representing the nonprofit Friends of Caltrain, and also as part of a, the Smart Coalition, the San Mateo County Alliance to Renew Transportation with members including Sustainable San Mateo County, the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition Transform, and others that are looking at a, a variety of issues relating to transportation in San Mateo County, with goals including mobility, sustainability, and equity. And with those goals, we have a number of questions about this project as it moves forward through the process to think about. So, one is on the topic of mobility and also sustainability relating to induced demand. And this is something that I believe the project is going to be looking at, because in a situation where you add a lane on the highway, that has the potential to attract more people to drive on the highway. That could be pulling people, you know, off of local streets in El Camino, which would be good, or it could be pulling people down off 280, and then, or even off of transit and carpools to go by yourself, and that would not be good. And looking at that is something that will be important for environmental sustainability. And also, as one of the questions was being asked, if you look at Woodside or Ralston or some of the side streets, there's not a lot of extra room. So, how is that going to impact the side streets if we have more cars here? That would be something to look at. Another issue with regard to mobility, as well as sustainability, is that we saw that in the version, the project version, with lane conversion, or with all of them, you wind up getting the best results if there is mode shift. And the question is how, what's going to be done to enable and ensure that mode shift? So, we heard that there's a grab bag of projects that are going to be done. How are we going to know? Do we have a picture? Do we have an entity that's responsible? So, in our area, we have entities like Stanford that do a great job of, of mode shift, but it's not just, hey, do what you will. There's a lot of monitoring and goal-setting that goes along with it. So, how are we going to get that mode shift in high occupancy use? And then, lastly, there are questions about equity. And when you have a toll lane, how will that impact lower-income commuters? Are there going to be services that are available, discounts that are available that will help this be a benefit to people of all income levels? So, those are some of the things that we are watching for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jaffe, followed by Tanya Soleh.
Good evening, and thank you to the city council for the chance to speak. My name is Brian Jaffe. I'm the creator of VOCA, a new way for people to share their opinions on local issues. VOCA asks people questions about local issues via text message, collects their responses, and then shares these responses at public meetings such as this one. This week, VOCA asked residents of Redwood City the following question. From one to five stars, one meaning strong opposition, five meaning strong support, how much do you support raising the minimum wage in Redwood City sooner than required by state law? This question was prompted by the discussion at the last city council meeting about exploring this topic. Fifty-five Redwood City residents responded to this question, and I'd like to share their opinions with you now. This graphic shows the breakdown of support, with five meaning strong support at the top and one meaning strong opposition at the bottom. As you can see, respondents supported raising the minimum wage sooner than required by state law by more than a three-to-one ratio. In total, 39 people rated the idea either four or five, and 11 people rated the idea either one or two. Five people rated the, gave it a neutral response of three. In additional, in addition to numerical scores, VOCA also allows people to share comments illustrating why they support or oppose the idea. I will share some of these representative comments with you now. Those in support of the idea frequently cite the high cost of living. Quote, "It's insanely expensive to live here. I don't mind paying a little more for services in order to help Redwood City service workers make ends meet." Another, quote, "Housing costs have skyrocketed and wages are not keeping up." Those who oppose the idea frequently cite adverse effects on manipulating the labor market. Quote, "Artificially inflating the price of labor will simply make it more difficult for businesses to thrive, producing more scarcity of entry-level jobs. You like those new restaurants in Redwood City? Watch them fold as you implement this dreadful idea." Other frequent comments relate to implementation. Quote, "It's clear that the Bay Area needs a higher minimum wage than the rest of the state. However, care must be given to make sure that nearby cities would also have comparable wages as Redwood City." These are only a few of the many comments received. Full results can, and comments can be seen at this web address, all lowercase, voc.as/rwc1. Thank you again for the chance to speak, and I look forward to sharing opinions on another local issue at the next city council meeting.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I'm speaking on consent, not on public comment.
The items on consent are spoken during public comment.
So, consent item 63D. Hello, councilmembers. I am Tanya Soleh, a resident of Docktown, a floating community in Redwood City. I am speaking today in support of Mayor Seabird's request and staff's support of a recommendation to support the Paris Agreement and join the mayor's climate network. I only wish that the criteria to join the network was a bit more stringent, as in not only suggesting things, but actually requiring action. Some of the suggestions highlighted in the staff report include, one, developing a climate action plan aligned with the city's targets and tying in mitigation and adaptation measures when possible. Two, ensuring climate equity and environmental justice is prioritized in climate action plans. The reality is that I am extremely supportive of this action, just a bit nonplussed about the fact that the city is actually talking about doing this, because the sad reality is that you are only talking. Real action on just the two points I mentioned would entail doing proper, comprehensive California Environmental Quality Act sequel reviews of each and every project presented, and keeping a community like Docktown that is already amphibious and adapted to sea level rise, climate mitigation, and environmental justice. I hope that now that the city has decided to publicly align itself with Paris, it will not just talk the talk, but also walk the talk. I and others from Docktown are prepared to help you fight to update the policies of the California State Lands Commission, which has written today, "Take private ownership away from lands that are claimed by sea level rise and climate change." Mayor Seabird, councilmembers and staff, I am sure that your children and grandchildren don't want you just to pay lip service to the Paris Agreement and climate change. They want you to act. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one other speaker's card from I have one other speaker's card from Alex Pendrange, Pendrange, and I don't know what item it's on. Alex, are you, what item is, are you, is it on an agenda item?
Not on the agenda.
Okay, so it is under public comment. Okay, so now would be the time, you can get up now and speak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alex Pendrangi and thank you for your time this evening. I want to talk a little bit about a way for the city to earn additional revenue at no additional cost. So it's really frustrating to me when city facilities sit empty or underutilized during various times of the day or various points of the season. Our platform can really help streamline facility rentals, include for courts, gyms, really any spaces that the facility is looking to rent out incrementally, as well as increased participation in existing programming such as leagues, clinics, camps, anything of that nature. Now, we do this by allowing the city to directly market its open spaces and times to an established base of hundreds of local coaches and thousands of athletes, local athletes, that's also growing rapidly. So on the administrative side, the platform would be free for the city to use. It's a web-based portal that doesn't require any changes to existing IT infrastructure. And we also provide a significant level of personal injury and liability insurance to cover the city and participating venues. Now ultimately, we're looking to help the city generate additional revenue, not just to cover growing expenses on the operating and maintenance side of these facilities, but also to reinvest in programs for the community going forward. So we'd be really excited to potentially partner with the city on this and I'd be really excited to sit down and talk with the appropriate member of leadership going forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our staff has this. If they find it appropriate, they'll get back in touch with you, not the council. So thank you. Okay, with that, that is for public, okay, with that, we go to consent. Before we move to voting on consent tonight, consent calendar, I believe Councilmember G has a statement to make regarding six point one A item.
Yes, Mayor Seabird, I'd like to pull item six point one A and six point one C. On six point one A, my healthcare group at Swinerton is an alliance partner with Kaiser. Until my situation with the FPPC is resolved, I'll be abstaining from that item. On six point one C, I am on the board directors for Broadway by the Bay, which is proposed to receive a civil cultural commission grant, so I will also be abstaining from that item.
Okay, and will there be any discussion on six point one A or six point one C? Okay, seeing none, you can stay here, but just abstain from the vote. So with that, I would take a motion first on six point one A and six point one C.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion, a second on six point one A and six point one C. Electronic vote, please.
Motion carries five, zero to one with Councilmember G abstained.
Thank you. And I will take, let me take a motion first. I will take a motion on the remainder of consent.
So moved.
A motion.
Second.
And a second. And I believe there's a comment by Councilwoman Howard on six point one H.
Thank you, Mayor Seabird. Six one H is the Agreement for Service between the City of Redwood City and the Sequoia Union High School District for a school resource officer for forty hours a week to be on the campus. And since 2000, we have had this arrangement with the school district and it is partially funded by the school district. The school, the officer supervises sporting events, attends other school functions. It's a very positive experience having an officer on the campus. It truly is. And the students, though, when I've been there, the students say how much they appreciate having an officer there, that their safety level, they just feel so safe and so comfortable. And of course, the relationship has grown with the police department and the students. I brought it up because this was the, what was recommended for school year 2017, eighteen, which is $30,000 to be the share of cost for the school district. I believe that amount has been in effect for several years, maybe many years. I was just hoping that next year, maybe we could look at this amount and see if there might be an increase, increase suggested because as costs go up for salaries, all of our costs are going up and we are looking at this, that maybe we should analyze this figure and see if we could negotiate a little bit more for the school resource officer for school year eighteen, nineteen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I have a motion and a second on the remainder of the consent calendar. If you haven't already, please vote electronically.
Motion carries six, zero. Thank you.
Okay, and tonight on consent, we approve the following consulting services for the Kaiser Medical Office Building Phase Two, the project at 1175 Marshall. Service League request for subcoordination of city affordability covenants regarding shared housing. Civil Cultural Commission large grants. Local project sponsor with the Association of Bay Area Governments on, and the San Francisco Estuary Partnership. Agreement for professional services with next level information technology for financial system replacement. Contract staffing in the Planning Division, award of contract for the Marine Parkway Spot Repair Project. Can we make sure we get a note about that in the pilot? Thank you. Agreement for service between the City of Redwood City and the Sequoia Union High School District. Agreement between the City of Redwood City and all city management services for crossing guard services. Approval of PC refresh bid for 114 computers related software. Approval of draft meeting minutes for the regular meeting held on June 2nd, 2017. Building Department Mutual Aid Agreement with County of San Mateo and other cities within San Mateo County. Approval of agreement to fund required improvements for the development of 550 Allerton Street. Cabin Road Foundation Grant to Fund a Police Officer Wellness Program. And Paris Climate Agreement. And I was actually going to say, I just want to be really clear, I'm not, I actually had it written in pink on my notes, so everybody knows, I was going to say something about this. This is not in, in retort to the, the earlier speaker, but I find it very interesting, very, very happy to, to do this. We signed on to this. It takes a little while for things to go through the paperwork mill and, and get to us. We've talked about this. But it also strikes me, Redwood City, long before myself, and Councilwoman Howard and Vice Mayor Bain have been strong supporters many, many years ago of environmental initiatives. Redwood City is, has a healthy climate action plan and we have a very strong support of environmental initiatives going way back in councils in the past, including work, significant work in the restoration of Bear Island, thanks to former council members that, that served. And so it's, this is great, happy to support it, but certainly nothing new for Redwood City. The next item is an agreement with HIP Housing for the acquisition of 1512 Stafford Street for Affordable Housing. Preservation Resolution and Ordinance to Amend Contract with Calpers and Approved Claims Checks dated June 26, 2017 and that use of necessary payments through July 24, 2017. That is a lot. But with that, we are moving on to our first public hearing. Item seven A, which is Fee Modication for the City Clerk Finance, Library, Parks, Recreation and Community Services and Public Works Service Fees. I would like to introduce Revenue Services Manager, Jun Nguyen, is that right? Who will provide the report for this item. Thank you for being here.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. As you're aware, the city had not updated its fees in several years, but the cost of providing services has increased significantly due to rising employee costs. In June of 2016, the city contracted with Matrix Consulting Group to conduct a two-phase fee study to align the city's fees with current cost recovery levels. Last month, the city council held a public hearing and adopted fee schedule modifications, including certain community development, police and fire fees. Tonight, I will be presenting staff's recommendation for the second and final phase of the fee study for City Clerk Finance, Library, Parks, Recreation and Community Services and Public Works. Based upon current activity levels, the potential revenue increase associated for Phase Two Departments is approximately $59,000 for the general fund and $2,500 for the equipment services and water fund. The $2,000 revenue increase for City Clerk and Finance comes from the fee charge, fee charges for actual cost of DVD and flash drives for multimedia, media duplication and an increased return check fee to match the state civil code. The $2,500 Public Works increase comes from the increased electric vehicle charging fee to cover the costs associated with maintenance and operation of the charging stations. For Library and Parks and Recreation, the potential revenue increases are due to the modification to facility rental fees based on the market rate. The facility rental fees are historically driven by demand and market comparisons of similar services as residents have a choice between utilizing services offered in their own city or those of neighboring cities. And it's important to note that these fees are based on market value as compared to surrounding cities and are not based on the cost of services. On average, the library is currently recovering 14% of its costs, resulting in under recovery of $210,000. The proposed changes to fees include aligning fees established by Peninsula Library System such as daily overdue fines. In addition, printing and photocopying fees are proposed to be modified to cover the cost of the machines and supplies. The room rental fees are proposed to be modified according to market rate. Staff also recommends that nonprofit groups receive two free room rentals per month and half-priced rentals for additional uses thereafter. And this is consistent with the room rental policy proposed for Parks and Recreation. And if the proposed changes are adopted, the potential revenue increase will be approximately The proposed fee schedule was presented to the Library Board on May 16th and no changes were recommended. For Parks and Recreation Services, the goal is to provide services and benefits that are affordable to residents and competitive with surrounding areas. As mentioned previously, these fees are driven by demand and are based upon the market value as compared to surrounding cities instead of the cost of service. The focus of this study was to ensure that facility and picnic rental rates are competitive compared to similar services offered by surrounding cities. And Matrix reviewed Parks and Recreation's other fees and services and confirmed that the methodology used in setting these fees as well as overall cost recovery rates are within the average cost recovery rate of 20 to 40%, typically seen in other cities. On average, Parks and Recreation is currently over recovering 114% of its costs as it specifically and only relates to facility and picnic rentals. The proposed change for Parks and Recreation includes the modification to facility rental rates similar to that of library room rentals. For nonprofit groups, will receive two free, free room rentals per month and half-priced rentals for additional uses thereafter. If the proposed changes are adopted, the potential revenue increase will be approximately $44,000. The proposed fee schedule was presented to the Parks, Recreation and Community Services Commission on May 24th and no changes were recommended. This table shows the comparison of facility rental policies for nonprofit groups in surrounding cities. The City of San Mateo charges 25 to 50% of the resident rate for facility rentals by nonprofit groups, whereas Burlingame provides a discount only for specific types of nonprofit groups for library. San Carlos charges the same rate as the resident would receive. And this graph shows the fee comparison of ranges for parks' room rental rates with neighboring cities. And this one shows the picnic rental rates. To ensure the long-term fiscal health of the city and provide sufficient cost recovery for services provided, staff recommends that council adopt the proposed fee schedule as presented. As directed at the May 8th meeting, staff will compile these and all existing fees into a master fee schedule. Staff also recommends that council approve an annual administrative update to public works fees in an amount tied to average increases of employee salaries and benefits. For facility and picnic rental fees, staff recommends the fees be reviewed every two years based upon the market rate. And staff also recommends automatically adopting the policies of the Peninsula Library System Administrative Council that would not have significant negative revenue implications for the city's general fund. Finally, council is recommended to approve certain ordinance amendments in order to be consistent with council adoption of these fees. The changing fees will be effective on July 22nd, 2017 for City Clerk Finance and Library fees that are not related to the facility rentals. September 22nd, 2017 for Public Works fees, which is 60 days from when the second reading of the adopted ordinance would occur. And January 1st, 2018 for facility rental fees for Library and Parks and Recreation. And I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Okay, before that, we'll actually go to open the public hearing. I have no speaker's cards. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A motion, a second to close the public hearing. All who are in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay. With that, any questions, comments, council action? Is this one action or three? It's, I'm guessing it's either one or three.
It can be all three at the same time. It's how the council chooses to move.
With that, Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Seabird. Thank you for the presentation. I think the work that the consultants have done along with our city team has been consistent with our last item to adjust fees for all the other departments and consistent with the council's direction that we want to make sure we're recovering costs to the extent we can for cost recovery departments as well as providing services to our community. And so unless there are other council comments, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance, adopt the resolution. See where we're amending and adopting certain fees and changes for City Clerk Finance and Administrative Services, Library and Parks and adopt this resolution, amending and adopting certain fees and changes, charges for public work services as indicated in the staff report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the three items listed in the staff report. For the comment, electronic vote, please.
Motion carried, six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to item seven B, the second of our public hearings. This is the adoption of Redwood City Fiscal Year 1718 Budget. City of Redwood City Five-Year Capital Improvement Program, successor agency to the Redwood City Redevelopment Area Fiscal Year. Before we get started, I just want to, if you're here for another agenda item, which I'm, I'm not super overloaded with speaker's cards for the budget. That's a joke. Understand something, a tremendous amount of work has gone on to this budget. We've had several meetings over it, a tremendous amount of staff work and council work and studying. Somebody has the budget here. Somebody hold it up. There we go. Councilmember G has a big copy of it. You can hold it up. Thank you. So a lot of work has gone into this tonight is what the city, the council will go through to approve this and put it in motion, but I just want to thank you all for, for all the work you've done. For that, with that, there is a brief staff report. I'd like to introduce Kimber McCarthy, our Assistant City Manager, who will present this item.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I will be very brief tonight. This slide shows the steps that we've taken since February of this year to get to the adopted budget before you this evening. And on June 12th, we did present the recommended budget to council and described the economic conditions that were affecting the budget development as well as the five-year forecast. And at that time, city council did not have any changes, fiscal changes to the recommended budget. However, there were feedback or items that were incorporated into the adopted budget document that are shown on this slide. So we have clarified that we will develop a funding plan for the 10184 interchange. And in the citywide accomplishments section, we're going to list the city's participation in the Peninsula Clean Energy and list out the city's financial support for two affordable housing projects. In addition, in the port section, we will add a goal to continue efforts to bring ferry service to the port. And then finally, consideration of a local minimum wage and Courthouse Square events evaluation will be put in the city manager and parks' goals. So the recommended actions before you by motion of the city council is to adopt a resolution for the fiscal year 1718 budget, to also adopt the five-year capital improvement program. And then as acting as the successor agency board, adopt the 1718 successor agency budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. With that, I do need to open the public hearing. I have, as you can tell, no speaker's cards on this item. So entertain a motion to close the public hearing. A motion, a second to close the public hearing. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, comments? Councilwoman Howard, do you have a comment? Are you going to make a motion? Are you going to make a motion?
I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead and make the motion, then if we have a comment, we can take that.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to adopt the city council resolution adopting the fiscal year 201718 budget and approving and adopting the five-year capital improvement program. And may I also take the next one? Should we do that separately?
Sure.
Please.
Oh, you want it separate?
Because you are acting as different bodies for those two, please.
Good point. Thank you for catching that. Okay, so we, the first one is for the budget and the five-year CIP comment?
I'll second the motion.
Oh, sorry, I did need a second. Appreciate you seconding it.
Just a comment on the CIP budget, and Mayor Seibert made accolades to the team for our operating budget, the same accolades go to our CIP budget because it's a five-year projection now. And one of the recommendations for consideration I'd like to offer is that as we go through a mid-year budget update on an annual basis, that we might want to do a mid-year budget update on our CIP program also, just to see where we are, if we are successful with 10184 to get that in there. Excuse me. And other things, as this is the first time we've had a five-year CIP and it's rolling forward, that we might want to just start to do mid-year budget updates on that as we get new money, as projects get completed, or we are able to obtain new grants.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Mazur?
Thank you. And I just wanted to follow on to Councilwoman G's comment because, as I mentioned earlier, I was at the meeting for congestion management and environmental quality earlier today. And two of the items under consideration for that body, one of which is a request for proposals for communities to combine safe routes to schools with watershed protection measures. So there will be grants coming out from it. And by virtue of having our CIP in place, I think it places us well in line for potential to receive some grants to do both at the same time. So hopefully, we will have an update that will have some grants. And then also around, another piece around countywide subsidized carpooling using some apps. And so as we look at some of our transportation measures within the CIP, we can also think about how that might impact some of our considerations.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we'll go to an electronic vote on the budget and the five-year CIP, please, if you haven't already voted. There it is.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. Entertain a motion on the successor agency board?
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second to adopt the successor agency resolution adopting the fiscal year budget for the successor agency. Because the state took our money and never gave it back. Oh wait, it was my microphone, I'm sorry. Time anybody wants to.
Motion carried, six to zero.
That was not part of the motion. Editorial about the affordable housing money they still have. With that, we are moving on to item 8A, the Housing and Human Concerns Committee Housing Policy Recommendations. The state's backed to a tremendous amount of work that was done by our Housing and Human Concerns Committee, working with the community to develop some recommendations. And we had a robust study session with the HHC, the council had a tremendous amount of discussion, and then it comes back to us tonight to make some formal recommendations. I did, before tonight's presentation, I did want to acknowledge the work of the Housing and Human Concerns Committee. Are there members here? I know some of them are here. So if you're here with the, if you're here, stand up. Thank you. We got back there. Thank you for your hard work. I'm sure the others, thank you for being here tonight. This is a directional and informational item as these things, as we give comments, will come back in formal action before us, but tonight will be just some clarifying recommendation on the recommendations that we made back in, well, I'm sure we'll hear in a minute when that meeting was. I think it was in October, if I remember correctly. So thank you for doing that. And with that, I believe that looks like Mr. Aknin, our Assistant City Manager, will begin the staff report.
Thank you and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'll briefly go over how we got here today as well, and then turn it over to our consultant who's been leading the HHC process. As the mayor mentioned, this is a process that started a little bit over a year ago in February 2016 when we had the Managing Growth Study Session. At that, affordable housing was, affordable housing policy was one of the main direction that we got as staff. And the council tasked the Housing and Human Concerns Commission with hosting a series of community meetings as well as HHC meetings and come back to the council with policy recommendations. Those meetings occurred in May through September of last year, and there was a study session, a joint study session with HHC and the council in October of last year. At that time, there were nine conceptual policy recommendations put forward to the council, and we were set in three different categories, some that we wanted to move forward with right away, a middle category that we wanted to have HHC, HHC do additional research, and then a third category where we didn't want to move forward at this time. The recommendations that came from that middle category to do additional research and come back to the council with specific policy recommendations were related to strengthening our relocation ordinance, looking at a minimum lease term ordinance, as well as looking at an inclusionary housing ordinance. And that's what occurred since that time. We've brought on Baird and Driscoll Consultants. They're a very knowledgeable consultant firm that's helped San Mateo County through the last two planning housing cycles, have done a good job pulling together policies from different cities that we could potentially use as a template here in Redwood City. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Jeffrey Baird, who is a principal with Baird and Driscoll.
Hello, Mayor and members of the council. We're very happy to be here and to be the medium to convey the health, the Housing and Human Concerns Committee's recommendations to you. I need my glasses so I can see what my notes say. Yeah, as Aaron mentioned, Josh Abrams and I work with 21 Elements, which I think you all are aware of, where we've worked with collaboratively with all the jurisdictions in the county. And so it's very much a pleasure for us to work on projects with individual cities and to be able to bring that knowledge, but also to get into the details and to create products that are really tailored to each community's use and needs. We looked at the three issues that Aaron mentioned, minimum lease terms, which is also known as right to lease, tenant relocation assistance, and then inclusionary zoning. Just as an aside related to the inclusionary zoning, the committee recommended that the inclusionary zoning ordinance not be pursued at this time for a couple of reasons. One is there's, there's a, there's a bit of flux in terms of legal challenges as well as state fix, state law fixes to how inclusionary zoning is used in the state. I think also the committee felt that there were, they were seeing successes from the actions that the city has taken, whether it's related to impact fees or others, that are actually producing units that you would get through inclusionary zoning. So I think there was the recommendation to kind of wait and see and not move forward at this particular time in terms of inclusionary zoning. My presentation will then cover the, basically the two other topics that we covered. The initial part of the work entailed the collection of best practices, comparison with what other cities are doing. We also utilized extensive amount of work that's been undertaken by 21 Elements, looking at strategies to address the issue of tenant displacement. And I know it's, it's an extremely controversial topic, but it's also an extremely critical topic to look at. And so I actually really commend this community looking at, at those issues. We used an extensive amount of work that has been done by 21 Elements on these strategies and as well as other materials that are available in the, through the Bay Area sources. It was very hard for us to find an exact match, and I know you were looking at comparative cities, so we kind of took a little potpourri of, of matches to see, to help the Housing and Human Concerns Committee go through the discussion on these, on these topics and to understand kind of the implications and what's working in other communities, what might not be working, and what could be applicable to Redwood City. And just by way of an example, there are many cities that include tenant relocation assistance, but in most cases, it's tied to or included in those cities that have rent stabilization or rent control or just cause for eviction ordinances. So they're, they kind of come under this big umbrella that's protecting tenants and, and have a framework then to be applied. What we had to come up with was basically standalone ordinances that would work independent of, of anything else. The two jurisdictions that provided the best comparable information actually were nearby, Mountain View and Menlo Park. And so we actually have talked to staff at both those jurisdictions to see how those ordinances are working and to provide you with, you know, good feedback on, on what might be state-of-the-art best practice for Redwood City. We also followed up a lot with the, with Housing and Human Concerns Committee's questions related to options or problems or successes, things like that. So there was a lot of research that went into this, this work. So with that, I just want to kind of walk through with you the, the recommendations of the HHC and, and then answer any questions you might have. In terms of the factors that the committee felt were important as it related to minimum lease terms, was to provide tenants with stability, more stability than they currently have, as well as recognizing the need for flexibility between the tenant and the landlord and coming up with maybe another agreement that can fit both their needs. The committee didn't want to impact or create an impediment to accessory dwelling units, so that was another consideration. There also is no constraints on landlords raising rents. So just to be very clear on that, that is part of the committee's recommendation that, that when a lease expires, landlords still have the freedom to, you know, raise rents as, or decrease rents as, as they want. The other factor that came up through our discussions is concern about the differences between what might be considered mom-and-pop landlords, the smaller landlords, as compared to the larger developments that might have more capacity, if you will, to absorb the cost or, or even staffing and, and time implications of implementing these type of requirements. We did follow up with the City of Mountain View because they recently rescinded their relocation ordinance. And just to go through that, what they, the city, by voter approval, adopted rent stabilization and, and just cause. And because of that, there were some conflicts then with their relocation and, I'm sorry, with their minimum lease term requirements. So, so that was one of the reasons they rescinded the ordinance. But they also received some comments back from both landlords and tenants. Tenant comments were that they also wanted to, in the, in the Mountain View ordinance, the landlord is required to offer either a one-year or a six-month lease to the tenant. And tenants wanted to also have a requirement that the landlord offer a month-to-month lease as well, so that there's kind of a stable of choices in there for the, that the landlord must offer the tenants that the tenants can choose from. There's also the flexibility for the two to come to a mutual agreement on some other term or whatever, but, but that specifically, that specific addition was an issue that came up in Mountain View. For landlords, there was some, there was feedback from the smaller landlords in terms of the paperwork required of minimum lease terms. So it's, again, that goes back to the kind of the capacity issues and, and the critical mass to kind of cover costs. So in terms of the minimum lease terms, the length of the, of the, these are all recommendations of the Housing and Human Concerns Committee. The length recommended is to require either a one-year or six-month option for the tenant, and that must be provided, that choice must be provided by the landlord, that the, that the tenant and landlord can agree on other timeframes, and it's required to be offered each time the lease is renewed. So under that length of minimum lease requirements, you may want to consider direction in adding a month-to-month as well, since that was the feedback from Mountain View. The committee has not reviewed that, but that's just the feedback we've received. In terms of minimum project size, the committee recommends three or more units. So in other words, from three up would be required, landlords would be required to offer the one-year or six-month lease. In Menlo Park, their ordinance starts at five or more. So again, that may be some consideration of the mom-and-pop impacts, you know, but then that becomes a consideration here of, of, you know, kind of protecting or preserving tenants' ability to stay in their home or have more stability versus, you know, who that, and how much that impacts landlords. In terms of exemptions, this is kind of a standard list that actually is in both ordinances. Again, part of the recommendation was to avoid impacting second units and other, you know, the small landlords. And then finally, that the committee, you know, want to make it clear that the landlord can increase the rent at the end of the lease period. That it's not an impediment to any, whatever the landlord wants to do rent-wise. I'm just going to keep moving through the, both of these, if that's okay. In terms of the factors related to relocation assistance, I think the concern was about, primarily about the impact on lower income. In other words, households earning less than 80% of median income, of having the most challenging time finding replacement housing, especially in our local housing market. And also, again, not impacting the mom-and-pop landlords. I think in the case of relocation assistance, it's because there's a monetary aspect to it, they wanted to have a critical size that could then cover the relocation assistance. In addition, I think there was, we've had some discussion of how relocation assistance can provide to a degree, well, it's not directly a strategy to address displacement of tenants per se, it can act as an impediment, if you will, or a decision-making factor in, you know, a tenant being displaced. And, and so there was a consideration of that as well. And then finally is, I think the, the kind of the driver in this was providing an opportunity for lower-income households who work in a lot of the jobs to be able to stay local and find housing locally. In our conversations with Mountain View, they still have the relocation assistance in place, although it's been modified a little bit to be consistent with rent stabilization and other, other requirements, but they've had very good success with it. And so they have not found that to be a problem, you know, like as they did with the, you know, getting the feedback on the minimum lease terms ordinance. So in terms of the content require, requirements, it would be, it would apply to any rental unit. unit on properties of, again, the recommendation is on properties of five or more units. The landlord and, and the, the committee felt it was also, and, and the ordinance themselves as well, felt it important to specifically identify those actions, if you will, that precipitate the relocation assistance. Because there still are actions that a tenant can do that would break a lease or where the landlord still has remedies to remove a tenant and, and should under state law and, and do under state law. So these would be circumstances that would be different from circumstances that are covered under current regulations or, or which a landlord operates under. So the, the exemptions include mobile homes and compliance with enforcement orders and, and others that are very specific. In a sense, it does create, you know, if you will, quote-unquote, no-fault kind of situation for the tenant. But there, again, there still are circumstances where, say, the rents increased or, or other actions are taken where the tenant, you know, has a choice, but can be displaced. One exemption that, that was included is, and that the committee talked about was exempting a landlord from relocation assistance when they provide temporary relocation, where it's a temporary displacement, say for remodeling or something like that, where the landlord can provide alternative housing near, onsite or nearby to enable that kind of flexibility when those circumstances exist so that the tenant can move back in. Eligible households, there was a lot of discussion about this, and the committee decided that 80% of area median income or low income should be kind of the cap for the relocation assistance Amount, we had a lot of discussion about the amount and what's included. And the committee's recommendation is to include the base package, basically, if someone is eligible, would be three months' rent, median market rent, would have to be determined through some methodology, refund of security deposit, obviously after anything is needed to be taken out, and a 60-day subscription to a rental agency. In addition, the, the committee added another month to cover people with special needs households, as well as people who've lived in the community or in that unit longer. So there's a one-month addition for households who have lived in their unit for five or more years, so some way to verify that would have to be included. And then households 62 years of age or older, so that'd be senior households as people with, living with disabilities or households with one or more children. Again, still under the 80% median income cap for this program. And then again, for the temporary, and, and these are just some other things that were, that the committee wanted to make sure were in there. One is related to the temporary relocation that I mentioned earlier. Also providing the tenant, if it is a temporary displacement, if you will, or relocation, to give the tenant the, at least a first right of returning to the unit after the, after the work has been done, even though the rents may be higher, at least give the tenant who was living there a first choice. And then any other, you know, special circumstances related to city code and other things. That concludes my, my presentation on, on these two items. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. If, we'll get to council questions and comments together. I do have, this is not a public hearing, but I do have two speakers cards, so I'd like to get to those at this time. Thank you. And well, I'm sure you'll be back up to answer questions in a minute, so don't go very far. But I do have two speakers cards, and so I'd like to take those now. The first speaker is Cesar Gonzalez, followed by Chris Johnson.
Counsel, the HHCC report highlights the fact that renters expressed last year concern over gouging rent rises and no-fault evictions. If Redwood City is committed to alleviate the pain in the community, it has to look no further than Mountain View. Last year, they ran a wonderful campaign, successful campaign, to enact rent stabilization and just cause eviction in their communities. Otherwise, a moratorium on rent increases and relocation assistance triggered by no-fault eviction are the most meaningful ideas the city can adopt. The city has to realize that these are not solutions, these are bandages. We have an affordability crisis. How high must the impact fees be before the city is affordable? How long must the minimum lease be until the city is affordable? Right now, we're just building really market-rate units. Some percentage of units affordable here, maybe an affordable project here or there. We need a lot more housing. How many units must be built until the city is affordable? And if that even translates to landlords knocking on tenants' doors, telling them that their rent's gone down? The city has to be bolder than this. It can't shy away from rent stabilization and just cause. As alluded earlier, the city, the state has withdrawn funding for redevelopment. We're not building enough. There's nothing left. If the city is serious at addressing this issue, it has to think about housing for the many, not the few. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Cesar, for starting the conversation on renter protections. My name is Chris Johnson. I'm a 17-year resident of Redwood City. I'd like to start out by thanking the volunteers of the HHCC. HHCC, I attended two of the meetings on the subject of renter protections and housing production, and there's no questioning their dedication and compassion on the subject of housing policy. Given the displacement and gentrification that is running rampant through our city right now, I find this staff report incredibly underwhelming. This has nothing to do with the HHCC and their efforts. This has everything to do with what our city decided to focus on. The two most important ways to combat, combat displacement were not even studied, and that's rent stabilization and no-cause evictions. The fact that our HHCC was directed to not evaluate either of these two options is failing the one, the hundreds, if not thousands, of people who are being evicted every month. We were late to the game to begin with, and then we waited 16 months for this report, and all we got were two recommendations, one on minimum lease terms and two on possible relocation assistance. Once again, it's shocking that the staff report fails to even mention rent stabilization and just cause eviction. We didn't publicly study these issues, so how can we decide as a community whether they were going to be effective? This isn't black magic I'm talking about. There are plenty of Bay Area cities that have already enacted rent or stabilization, including Mountain View, San Jose, Richmond, Hayward, San Francisco, Berkeley, Los Gatos, and East Palo Alto. On top of that, there are also many cities that have already enacted no-cause eviction protections: Mountain View, San Jose, Richmond, Hayward, San Francisco, Berkeley, Los Gatos, Alameda, and East Palo Alto. If all these cities can do this, what is stopping us other than the will of council? It's no coincidence that evictions have spiked since the DTPP was adopted. Not only did we create zoning and a streamlined approval process like the downtown precise plan that exacerbated displacement, but we have failed in those six years to come up with a game plan that will have a significant impact on the renters who face chronic housing uncertainty in Redwood City. I truly hope that we can start putting the same amount of effort in truly addressing our rental housing crisis as we haven't been putting into the approving of thousands of market-rate units in our city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, again, it's not a public hearing, so I wanted to close it. With that, council comments, questions? Councilwoman Howard, do you want to start?
Sure, I thought we had to close the public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing, okay, thank you. Yes, I did have a couple of questions for Mr. Baird. Mr. Baird, regarding minimum lease terms, can you explain, why is government exempt? It says units acquired by city or other agency, governmental agency. Why, and, why is that so?
The probable reason would be if, if there are other requirements of a, you know, public funding for another project or a development that may conflict with this requirement. So it would be partially that. The other would be that those are developments where tenants can stay and they're not subject to being displaced, if you will, in, in general. So there's that exemption. But I think the primary reason to include those types of developments would be just not to conflict with whatever rules and regulations they, they work under.
Okay. So it, I, I hear what you're saying, okay. I was, in the report initially, we were, it said that we were going to be told about any unintended consequences or costs where cities evaluated whether they made the right decision and made any changes. And I, could you highlight any of that for me? I couldn't find it in the report, other than a couple of sentences, but any of the cities that are in comparison or close to us, did they initiate something, other than Mountain View, with their, the ordinance that they passed? Do you have any other examples of unintended consequence that came out of things that they put into place?
I, I don't know of any others than, you know, we talked about in terms of kind of the pushback from tenants and landlords. Yeah, please, go ahead.
Thank you. One thing that came up, we did have a discussion with the California Department Association before this, just to give them a heads-up about that, that these policies were coming up, and we did offer to sit down with them. I think conceptually, they're fine with these as we move forward. They did have some implementation concerns that they wanted to go over with, with us. I think one thing is they said sometimes ordinances get too specific. So there was an ordinance that they referenced where it says, the size of font and the type of font you need for a minimum lease term, showing that this is a city requirement that you offer this. Well, that becomes really burdensome to smaller property owners as they have to change the font on their, on their, and it just causes a lot of implementation detail. So I think they wanted to sit down and give us some feedback over, you know, how, what burdens have been placed over minor issues that I don't think would affect us from a policy standpoint.
I would imagine that if these were put into place, the city would take on the enforcement by either contracting out or doing it ourselves. Any information from other cities about how cumbersome that becomes or costly?
Trying to differentiate the relocation assistance from the minimum lease terms. The minimum lease terms are really self-enforced in a lot of ways, and just as an aside, the apartment association provided Mountain View residents with a form that they could use. But in terms of, of, so let me make sure I understand your question. In terms of the staffing kind of, what, where is your?
Well, you've answered one question. I'm glad to see the, the tri-county apartment association, I would think, would be involved and inform tenants of their rights as far as if they feel they weren't offered a lease term, that they could, they'd know who to report to. So that's a self-enforcing thing. But I guess the, the relocation assistance would have to have oversight because you'd want to be sure that the owner is doing the correct thing. So I would imagine that cities have probably contracted out to have this service offered where we used, we have a, a group in Redwood City that we contract, who I believe, and I'm trying to remember the name of the agency, Sentinel, is it Sentinel? Project Sentinel. So I would imagine it would be an agency such as that that would be making sure that complaints that came in, they'd follow up right away and find out if, in fact, these terms were being agreed to.
Let me, I'm going to jump in here real quick. It's my understanding that when these come back, actually, as policies, that they will come forth, could you walk through that with us? That when these come back, they will come through with staff-associated costs? Because I think that's, I, I think this is a question that I'm guessing a consultant won't know because he doesn't work for the city.
So we have not, as, to date, assessed any of the staff time or, or cost impacts associated with enforcing any of the items that are before you. So that would be the next step, once we hear from you what you'd like us to pursue. That would be part of the evaluation, as well as a legal evaluation of the proposal.
So that, to be very clear, that will be coming back? All right, go ahead.
I have other questions, but I'll wait.
No, no, no.
Because they may get answered by other people.
Well, no, it's okay. I mean, you, I'd rather go through, if you've got, yeah, I'd rather go through it to try than try and keep track of who's got questions, love.
Okay, sure. Under relocation assistance, one of the triggers would not be then, at the end of one-year term, for instance, the landlord raises the rent and the person can't afford to stay there? Is that correct?
That's correct. It would not trigger relocation.
Okay. I was, I didn't see it, so I didn't want to assume that that wasn't. And this question may not be for you, but I, I do wonder why we didn't ask the Housing and Human Concerns Committee to study just cause eviction, because we had so much conversation surrounding it, and we've been asked a million times, as speakers have said, to at least look at it and study and see what other cities are doing. So I, I guess, not to you, Mr. Baird, but my question would be, is that something that maybe we should have asked Housing and Human Concerns to gather input on? Or was there a reason why we didn't? I'll just leave that at that.
Okay. And just to be clear, this information is coming back after we had a meeting and asked it to go back, so it was because we didn't ask them this time around? So it, I guess we'd have to go back and watch the tape of that meeting, but that was a previous meeting when we didn't. It wasn't that...
No, I...
This wasn't the consultant for the first round of meetings, this is the consultant for the second round of meetings with the HHCC.
No, I, I hear what you're saying, Mayor Seaver. I, I'm just saying that thinking now, listening to the speakers, I'll speak for myself, maybe I should have asked for further study to be given to those two topics, just to get more information on what other cities are doing and to make it a better decision. So I'll just take it on myself.
Councilwoman Borgans?
Thank you. So I have a question, and Erin, this might be for you. Could you explain, was it, you said tri-county is who you sat with or California Apartment Association? Is that the same?
Yeah, they've changed their name.
Okay. Okay, so they are in the business of protecting renters?
They're in the, no, they represent apartment owners.
Okay.
But I, I think the question, they do represent apartment owners, but there were some things that both tripped up apartment owners as well as the tenants. But true, when we're speaking with them, we're speaking, they're, they're speaking from the perspective of the apartment owner.
Of the apartment owner, okay. So I'm, I'm not overly concerned about the size of a font when it comes to changing a rental agreement. My main concern is taking care of our tenants and our residents. So, you know, I know that could be burdensome and time-consuming, and it's a computer highlight and whatever, so seriously, when you go back and talk to them, that to me is not a concern. The concern we have before us is affordable housing and how we keep our residents currently housed. So I was like, we're worried about a font, okay.
I think it had more to do with what was the city, what was the city enforcing? So if the city had to go and enforce these minor issues, were they not able to focus on bigger policy issues?
Well, I think I want to make sure when we sit down at the table with them that, and I'm not sure the rest of my colleagues feel, but that we actually are leading that conversation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it's not them telling us what their industry is doing because that's changing.
Correct.
So I'd like us to really lead that. Thank you. And then, Mr., I'm sorry, Bear, okay, sorry, just lost it. Thank you, Erin. So when I listen back to the meeting that we had, the joint meeting we had... So when I listened back to the meeting that we had, the joint meeting we had, I clearly heard this council, several of us said that we wanted to research everything. We wanted more research on a lot of this stuff. There were several of us that pinpointed what we didn't. One of the ones that did clearly fall off for research and action was the Run Increase Moratorium. That was taken off our list. But the rest was pretty much balanced between action and research. And when I played it back, that's the same thing I got. So I thought I heard you earlier say that there are only a couple of things that came back. And when I did the tallying, it was, you know, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight almost got combined, and then nine. And we all kind of supported either action or research. So I would really like to see that happen, the research that we recommended. And I am a little disappointed to see that we're now taking off the inclusionary zoning discussion. I know there's some legal ramifications, but I really want to keep it in front of us at all times. I can see we can't take action on it now. And I get the legal, you know, the loop, the problems right now with that. But I don't want to lose sight of that.
Absolutely, and I think you'll be able to see those as we move forward with plans like the El Camino Corridor Plan, where's the potential to have an inclusionary housing through different zoning measures that aren't actually an inclusionary housing ordinance?
Great, great, perfect, thank you. And then I was glad to see that there was a discussion regarding how long a tenant is in their unit. I, when you flip it, you could say, you don't want someone there a year and then saying, oh, I can get all this moving. I think there's a balance here. I'm a little concerned when the unit's going to be renovated and then someone's going to be relocated, either temporary or those, and then they can go, excuse me, they can go back in, but it might cost them a lot more. I'd like to have a discussion on how we can work with that. Because that's, we can relocate you here, so we will bypass all that, that relocation. Is that a discussion, or we can relocate you, or we can financially relocate you someplace else? So is that just part of the discussion? In other words, if the owner says, we're going to move you to this unit as we locate, as we upgrade your unit, so we don't have to pay you relocation fees, but we'll let you come back in, it's going to cost you more? Is there a loophole here? I mean, do you understand what I'm?
I know what you're asking, I think just, you know, you have to think about, so you're saying like, would an owner move somebody into a temporary residence and then say, okay, you can come back now, but it's going to cost five times as much? But I think you have to also consider, I mean, this is just me talking, so. But I think you have to also consider, there's a cost to the owner to move you into a temporary residence as well, which at a minimum is going to be like three months, which is what you're going to get anyway. So I can't, you know what I mean? Like, they're going to have to still spend the money.
Okay, so, but they could have the option?
But I want to clear, hold on, can you go back a screen? Because I think actually, if, you're talking about still under the existing lease? Because they can't break, in other words, if they temporarily relocate you, if they come in and go, hey, we want to upgrade your kitchen, so go live in this unit for a month and you come back. But if you're under a one-year lease, they can't bring you back and charge you more because you're under a lease.
No, but the statement here was, they could raise, so that was after your lease.
Can we clarify that? Because I didn't hear that at all.
That was after your lease was up, correct?
The way the committee talked about it is that each time the lease is renewed, then you would have to offer that new timeframe for the lease.
Right.
But only at the end of that.
Let me, I'm going to, I am going to jump in here because we're talking about two different things. Go, it says right here, the exemption. Temporary displacement, one, let's see, exemptions, one, two, three, four columns over. Temporary displacement due to remodeling and renovations where tenants are provided alternative housing site. That's an exemption for relocation existence, but it doesn't say when they come back that they, that they'll be charged more because they're still under a lease. You can't break a lease. Is that correct? Yeah. So that's, that's if, so I'll give you an example, I think of where this works out. So if your landlord discovered that you had dry rot in your bathroom and your toilet was about to fall through the floor, which is actually real, and they came in and said, all right, here's the deal, it's a one-bathroom house, you can't live here because we've got to gut the bathroom and refit it all. If you're under a lease and you're paying $2,000 a month and they go, all right, you got to go live over here. They don't pay you to go live over there. They will pay, there's other laws that require them to let you go. It's like when your house gets tented, I've had this happen to me. They have to put you up in a hotel for a couple of days while you do that. When you come back, you get the place back of the original rent because you're under a lease. The exemption there is the next column where it says, "end of lease." Right, so if you're still under a lease, the lease is still the law, we're not subverting lease law, yeah.
Okay, so then they would have an option if it was after their lease was up and they, because in the conversation, it talked about relocating them within the unit. So that would be a conversation at the end of their lease?
Not necessarily. When, I mean, one, I mean, if it's within the lease, then it's, you know, it's covered.
Okay, got it, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, then keep this slide up one more. Could you explain to me what mobile home park conversion would be? Just so I'm clear what that is.
These were some of the conditions that were included in the Menlo Park and the Mountain View ordinances. I think it's just because mobile homes have a separate kind of category that they would be exempt, much like, you know, maybe other, other specific types of uses.
Is that basically because we don't govern mobile homes? Is that, I don't want to lose.
Can we get a legal interpret, because there's a separate state law governing mobile home parks?
Yes.
And that's exactly what I was going to say, thank you, Mayor. So they're already protected under state law. And whenever there is a closure or a conversion, they, the property owner who is doing the conversion or closing will have to follow that state law. So it makes sense for HHCC to make that recommendation to the city.
Exactly. I knew they were under state law, I just wanted to make sure that's what that was. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Mazur?
Thank you. Quickly, I thank you to HHCC. I know when we had the study session, it was a little bit, we were, we had, sort of went back and forth on some different items. And so I appreciate you guys thinking through all of them and then coming back with your recommendations on the ones that you thought were appropriate for the time. So thank you for spending the time on doing that. I do have a couple of sort of questions about how we're thinking about this. So one of, we have, in one section, we have units three or less exempted. And in the other one, we have units five or less exempted. And I was wondering what the thinking was about having two different apartment sizes and the different potential policies?
I will speak for the committee.
I'll watch them to see if they're nodding when you say that.
Make sure they agree with me. I think the, my interpretation would be that since the relocation assistance was a monetary requirement, that the larger developments, in other words, five or more, had a greater, if you will, size and capability to handle that cost. With the minimum lease terms, I think it was more a paperwork type of issue. So I think the committee felt that offering those minimum lease terms to as many people as possible was a good idea and they felt it was acceptable down to the three or more units. Because it was just related to paperwork and not a significant.
Yeah, so that actually brings up another question that I have, which is, I've rented many places in my life, apartments and houses. And I'm just curious, you mentioned that some of the feedback you got was smaller landlords had said the cost of paperwork for a one-year lease was greater. Did you, do you have any sense of what that actually is?
Well, I think the concern was across the board that this, the minimum lease requirement or ordinance requirements put a burden, a paperwork burden on the, on the smaller landlords.
To just offer a lease at all?
Well, if they were offering, there's a, you have to offer the lease and there's a way you have to offer the lease.
Oh, I see.
And then you have to document.
I see.
And all of that.
I see.
So I think there's, it's attached to that as other kind of paperwork.
All right, that's helpful, thank you. Let me see. So I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Howard's question about the city, about government agencies and cities being exempted from offering leases? And what kinds of rules, and I don't know who this is the right question for. So I'm going to look her all around. What kinds of rules and regulations might make it difficult for, say, the city we're offering, we're administering low-income housing? Generally, we contract with other agencies to do that. So what, like, what would make it difficult or impossible for us to do, to participate in minimum lease terms?
I'll just take a stab at it and then invite certainly the city attorney to comment. But in another community where I have worked, the city has owned property, which it has leased or used as either employee housing or for some specific public purpose. So it wasn't a general purpose, you know, available to anybody in the community. It wasn't a situation where it was like other kinds of rental housing. So there was a specific reason that they bought it and for which they provided it as housing. So it's a really unique and unusual circumstance.
Okay.
And here, I don't think we have anything analogous or any plans to have any city-owned rental or housing.
Yeah, okay.
Would that be like, like, I know a city reasonably close to us, just south of us, owned a home that they, they owned a home that their city manager lived in, because I knew him when he lived there. And so a house like that, they wouldn't be required to off. Of course, that's only one house, so it wouldn't matter anyways.
Right.
So that's kind of strange, but.
Right, it's that kind of situation, or the community that I was in, it was actually, you know, a building inspector who happened to live in that home. So it could just be a different kind of purpose.
Another example that did happen here in Redwood City is where you purchase, if the city purchases property and it's currently occupied by residential tenants, we have state relocation requirements. It makes sense that we would be exempted from our own local regulations, very similar to what just happened for the.
Hard to understand, yes, yeah, I'd forgotten about that, even though I'd mentioned that earlier, yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay, I mean, that makes sense on the one hand, and then on the other hand, we're still talking, those are still sort of in single-family units which are exempted, right?
No, so that was multiple units.
Multi? Oh, okay.
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
So maybe one way to clarify, if you wanted to provide this kind of direction, would be to say circumstances where there isn't a higher level of law that applies, such as mobile home parks or other state law that would apply.
I think that's a great.
Then they would be exempt from the local.
Yeah, I think that would be good because what I wouldn't want to have happen is that we say, you private apartment owners, you guys all have to give people a year lease, but we're the city, so we're going to say, you can live here for a month, we'll let you know next month if you can stay. You know, and I don't think we would do that, but I think we should be held to the same standard if we're going to own multifamily units.
I think it's a great point.
If I may, one thing, if I can, I think that's a great suggestion. And maybe we'll think about how we can bring something with those types of regulations. But there are instances where the city can find it in its best interest to purchase property in order to, let's say, maintain the affordability. Well, once it purchases property, that property owner becomes our tenant. And then we have to go through terminating that, that holdover tenancy that ends up occurring. So there are, I mean, I'm just thinking off the top, but there are actually quite a few instances where the city can find itself in this situation. So we'll just want to think about those things as we create the ordinance.
Okay, well, I mean, I guess I would just ask for that consideration then, to think about how do we do it in a way that holds us to the kinds of standards that we're asking other people to live up to? So on that note, and, well, I'll just say one other thing, which is, Councilmember Borgans, you were sounding like you weren't totally clear on this whole, like, font size question. I think the, I think the issue on that was frequently, well, I don't know if it's frequently, so I'll just say sometimes, you know, when cities pass ordinances, they put in a lot of detail that makes it difficult to comply with an ordinance. And so typically in a policy, we want to stay at a higher level so that you're not getting into this regulation of like, and I think the concept behind that is like, if you put it in a really big font, then people know that this is required. And if you put it in a little, I mean, you think about your credit notices, right? There were a lot of federal changes required about how you got your credit notices and how they were worded, et cetera. So I think it's just trying to stay out of that and really keep to the point of any kind of ordinance that we would want, which is that people are given an opportunity to have a year lease if that's what they want. And so for me, just my feedback on these recommendations, I would like to see us move forward with that particular option. I think, I think it's appropriate to provide some flexibility and if people want a six-month lease for whatever reason, they're here for a short time for whatever reason, that they have the opportunity to either have a six-month or a month-to-month, but at a minimum, but that they're required to be offered a year lease to begin with, however the policy is written, but.
It's basically.
You can't circumvent it by saying like, yeah, you just get month-to-months.
Right, yeah, the, it would be written so that the landlord, at each time the lease is renewed or the first time, must offer either the month-to-month, six-month, or the one-year. And the decision is up to the tenant to choose which one.
Right.
They want. If they negotiate something separate, then they both have to come to agreement.
Yeah, yeah. So however that gets written. And then same on the relocation assistance. I think it's a good recommendation. I'd like to, I'd like to see, I'd like to see us move forward with further study of that and understand what might be possible for us to put into place. I know there's lots of different points of consideration, but I would like us to at least move forward to see what's possible. And then I would just say, you know, moving forward, I do think that CAA, the California Apartment Association, can help us if we move forward on these ordinances with reaching out to the landlords, making sure that they understand the requirements of the city. Some landlords own properties in multiple cities and we want them to know what we are saying here in Redwood City. And so I know that one of their goals is to reach out to their members and so to make sure that their members understand what we're doing in Redwood City. So, thank you.
Councilmember G?
Thank you, Mayor Seabird. First, I want to thank Housing and Human Concerns Committee for all the hard work. And please don't misinterpret some of our dialogue as you didn't do a good job. You did a great job with a very difficult subject. And you took back what was the result of the study session. And I didn't count, I don't know, Councilmember Borgans, if you counted, but we had a number of speakers that evening also on a wide spectrum. And so this is never an easy issue, given the housing crisis in the region, not only in Redwood City, but you did what the council asked you to do, and thank you for that. In general, I'm very supportive and want to move forward, but as staff dives deeper into the details and as this comes back, some food for thought. As Councilmember Mazur said, I, on one level, I think there's three units or more and the other item, five units more. Can't we just pick a number like four and just say? I believe in simple, so I don't have to remember one number for this and a number for that. So maybe it could be four units or more and both ordinances apply, whatever, or five. Just pick a number just from a simplicity standpoint, so it's easier to communicate. With regard to the minimum lease terms, I agree completely. The landlord and the tenant, whether it's a new tenant or ongoing one, needs to have flexibility. Month-to-month, a six-month, a 12-month, or whatever they can mutually agree upon. I think that's very reasonable. But as you dive deeper into, into this, some things to think about. I think Councilmember Howard asked the question about government organizations. That night, we also heard, I think, at least a couple of speakers talk about Section 8 and the difficulty of obtaining that. And I don't want to layer another set of bureaucracies on top of already unwieldy, potentially unwieldy bureaucracy like Section 8. So I don't know how this works with Section 8, but I would like to keep it as simple as possible and not make this overly complicated for the few Section 8 owners or landlords that are providing that. From a lessons learned standpoint, I think one of the lessons learned from these other cities that have adopted this is to take a close look at the lease. And if I'm leasing an apartment, what my obligation. is to take a close look at the lease, and if I'm leasing an apartment, what my obligations are or requirements. If I sublease, if I go travel somewhere for six months or three months. I think those are two different occupants. I think the six, 12, and whatever at the landlord lessy relationship is one thing, and the tenant and the sub lessy is a whole different relationship. And so let's be mindful of what that might look like or not look like, and whatever council's desires are. But from my council perspective, those are two very different relationships that should be kept separate. Let me see where else I want to go in here. With regard to relocation, I think one of the interesting items in the relocation, which I am supportive of in general, is the requirement or the, that three months' rent, you provided the median market rent for a similar-sized unit. I don't know where that comes from, and if I'm a small landlord, how do I get that information? I mean, I don't want to be able, I don't want to have to commission a market survey every time I'm faced with a situation where I have to pay relocation. So I don't know if the committee has another metric that they can look at, whether HUD or some other fact-based organization, so that it's not subject to the whims of the market, where if I'm thinking about renovating a unit or paying relocation, I can plan for it within reason, rather than have to do a market survey and figure out what a two-bedroom is going for in April of 2018, and how do I build that into my renovation pro forma and things like that. So just some, some food for thought as this comes back. And then very, just as importantly, as the deeper dive occurs and the resource allocation requirements, as well as the legal review occurs, if this really does require enforcement from the city, how do we pay for it? And what some funding mechanisms might be to help pay for it? We just went through a budget presentation and approval saying, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be resource-constrained. I don't know if it's forever, but at least for the foreseeable future, and how do we take on something new with no resources and find a way to fund it? So that's gotta be a part of the conversation moving forward. Let's see, the other item then is also, I think it's on page nine of the staff report, where we talk about, there's a term, I think this is ready-to-go, where we talk about impact fee strategy. I think I mentioned this to Mistias this morning or this afternoon, is that just, that, that needs to be kind of walked backwards a little bit in terms of funding commitments. If I'm building something or developing something, I don't want to wait till I go out to bid to know my funding commitments are there. Particularly if I've got other funding partners like a bank, they want to know the fundings, the commitments are already there earlier than when you go out to bid. So I probably just need some work to go backwards a little further on that. Uh, let's see. With regard to that section, I think we are already doing many things, as I think Mayor Seabert said that in the study session. We are already partnering, if I remember correctly, with MidPenn and HIP, on acquiring two apartment buildings and to keep them at affordable, and I believe conversations are underway with St. Francis Center to do the same thing. So again, at the deeper dive, particularly at the legal review, to make sure there aren't any unintended consequences, as we would be at least a part-owner or lender to those three projects if they were to, you know, just how this might work when we're a partner, a financial partner with a project like that, post. Those are my comments, Mayor Seabert.
Hey, Vice Mayor Bain.
Thank you, a question or two, and then I'll, I'll address the issues. The first question I have, and this may answer the second question as well, you mentioned Mr. Baird, something about paperwork, like the amount of paperwork involved for smaller landlords. Was that referring to that font size issue, or is there some other issue related to that?
Well, this was a comment by City of Mountain View staff, that that was what they heard from the smaller landlords, that the requirements for document, developing and confirming and, you know, documenting this whole process required paperwork that was impacting them.
Was that referring to the leasing, or was that referring to the relocation ordinance?
Uh, that was the leasing, the minimum lease requirement, not the pushback on the relocation.
Okay, well, anyone who knows me knows I'm not a fan of paperwork, so I imagine that we'll find a way to streamline that if we implement that, and we'll do it differently than Mountain View did. All right, that answers my questions, thank you. First of all, I really want to thank the Housing and Human Concerns Committee. I know that this has been a difficult task, where you've been babarded by people with very strong opinions on both sides of the issue. It hasn't been easy, and don't feel discouraged by anything that you've heard tonight or otherwise. I think these are great recommendations, and they're very much in line with what we asked you to do. I would like to make it very clear for the record, there was a comment that the HHTC was directed not to look at rent stabilization or just cause eviction. That is not true. Anyone who goes back and looks at the public meetings, no one here at the DAAS ever said that. I can tell you that was never said in the mayor-vice mayor meeting. What we asked the HHTC to do was to look at best practices from other cities. And we looked at, we asked specifically for alternatives to rent control. And the reason why we did that was because no one on this DAAS has expressed an appetite for rent control in Redwood City. And I will say again, personally, I don't support rent control, and I say that based on personal experience. And just to give you one example, I lived in Berkeley, I went to school there, and I competed in a very tough housing market, where I was competing for a very small number of units and paying my own way through school and paying twice as much as friends of mine who were getting a free ride from their parents, because there was no means testing for rent control. It, it didn't work for many of us. It worked for the lucky few who were able to receive it, it didn't work for a lot of us. And I've asked rent control advocates, or, you know, the more popular term is rent stabilization, to come to us with ordinances that work and show us how they work, show us the data that shows how they work. I'll be very interested to see what happens in Mountain View with the initiative they passed. Now, just cause eviction, some of us have actually dug into this quite a bit, we're not just shooting from the hip up here. I spent a lot of time with the Community Legal Services of East Palo Alto, digging into these issues, trying to find some sort of a happy medium here. Rent stabilization or rent control sounds like a great silver bullet. So does just cause eviction. Just cause eviction, I'm sure the city attorney would back me up, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but it's only effective, it only works if there's a rent control ordinance or rent stabilization ordinance in place. Since there's no appetite here on the DAAS, and anyone who disagrees with me can disagree with me on this, for rent control, we're not asking you to waste time looking at just cause eviction. Now, that said, the Housing and Human Concerns Committee can look at whatever issues it wants. And if people want to come up and talk to the committee about that, and the committee wants to discuss it, you're free to do that. But I just wanted to clarify those issues, since I've heard them repeated, and things have a way of taking on life their own once they get repeated. I'm glad I had a chance to do that, and I'm really glad that, that we have such a great committee that made a good set of recommendations. I don't see this as the stopping point, I see this as a jumping-off point. Now, a couple of other points I want to clarify as well, so inclusionary zoning. We don't have the power currently to do inclusionary zoning on rental units, that's state law, we just don't have that. Kevin Mullen has a bill that's working its way through Sacramento that may change that, in which case we would be able to do that. So what we can do in the short term is we can work with developers and negotiate with them and try to get them to include below-market units into their properties. And that's what I've really been pushing for, in particular, because they have the ability to acquire land much better than we do. So we need them to be partners. So if there are any developers who are listening to this, we want you to partner with us on acquiring the land and building affordable units into those developments. We have done a lot of creative things with partnerships. The Stafford Street project was on the agenda tonight. That was a very creative option, where a private owner came to the city and said, well, you purchased this, and then worked with MidPenn to operate it. I don't want the city to be landlords, therefore, the conversation about our rental policy is hopefully going to be irrelevant for the foreseeable future, because we're gonna work with nonprofit partners who will keep those units affordable in perpetuity. I hope we can do more projects like the Stafford Street project, that's an innovative project. And I would like the HHTC to continue looking at innovative things that other cities are doing. What are some other great ideas that you can bring to the table for the discussion? Because we're certainly open to those, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Howard?
First of all, I wanted to thank Vice Mayor Bain for summarizing so well, that I really had forgotten, quite frankly, some of the conversation we had, and I really appreciate your summary, because it really clarified it for me. I think what I was wondering was, could we do a just cause eviction without rent stabilization? Because for the record, I've said the same thing, that I am not in favor of rent stabilization for many of the reasons you have in a different location, New York, but the same thing, about competing and no oversight on the rent control. However, what I didn't know is that just cause eviction is tied in very closely with rent stabilization. So thank you for doing that research and that, getting that information, because I was going to ask, should we be studying just cause eviction on its own, for its own merits? Is anyone doing that? But apparently, there's a risk in doing it that way, that they really need to be tied together. So thank you for doing that, I really appreciate it. And also, thank you to the Housing and Human Concerns Committee. Having been on that committee, I know the amount of hours that you put in, and I really appreciate, the report was excellent. You were very thorough, and thank you for listening to the community and having them at your meetings and taking the time to extra meetings, because it really took a lot of your personal time, and I really appreciate that. Lastly, I have a HART meeting this week, which is the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, and Vice Mayor Bain mentioned that we're working with nonprofits now. We're also acquiring or working with landlords of multi-unit apartments and rehabbing, working with them to rehab their buildings and giving them low-interest loans in return for guaranteed affordability for the tenants for a number of years agreed upon. And what I'm going to talk to HART about is, would they consider working with us on helping us do more of this? And I'll report back to you on, right now, they, they don't do much of this, they do mostly new construction or homebuyer assistance. But they're looking for new ideas, and as I'm sitting here listening, I'm thinking, this is an idea that I think will really, I think, get their enthusiasm up, because it'll create housing that's already there, it's just rehabbing it, making it clean and safe, and making sure it's affordable for many years to come. And I'd like to see HART become a partner with us in making more of these transactions happen. And when I get that information, I might like to consider having the Housing and Human Concerns Committee look into HART and the work they do, and study some of their projects, and see how we can possibly do more of the rehab building in Redwood, Redwood City. So thank you, Mayor Bain, Vice Mayor Bain again, and to the Housing and Human Concerns Committee, really appreciate your work.
Thank you. I said some thank yous before, but I hope that you'll go back, I know there are others that couldn't be here tonight. I hope you'll go back and share with them our pleasure with the work. It was extra work, I know you got paid all that overtime, I don't know how you'll spend all the money, kidding, they're volunteers. So thank you for that. I'm gonna cover just a couple of points, a few of these things have been mentioned, but I think a couple of them are worth mentioning again. One, there's a lot of things that were mentioned about the number of units. My question is, is that per site, per landlord, how big? I mean, if it's, things about market rate, things about defining special needs. One, and I'm gonna wrap all that up, when this comes back, I think it needs to have a very robust set of definitions. When we say something in the ordinance, we need to point to what that means. When we define a special need, point to exactly what that means. When we point to a market rate, or where and how much relocation, we've just got to have a very, because where are these things? I see these things become problems later on, is when we, when we short-circuit the list of definitions at the beginnings of the ordinance or somewhere in there contained in, so that it's very clear to landlords. And I think, I think that is one of the great things, and one of the things that the work of the, of the California Apartment Association through Tri-County does, and that is providing helpful information about, just make sure, you hear this all the time from developers, from landlords, just tell me very clearly what the rules are. So I'm gonna be looking at this with the eyes of making sure there's no ambiguity about what it is. To that point about definitions, I do want to offer something if it would be acceptable, but if you'll go back, well, forget going back, I can just, I know it's in there, there was, there was a group of special needs. I would really like to see veterans added to that list. It's an easy one to determine, it's extremely easy to figure out whether a person was a veteran or not, it is the type of housing. I know this area, we, we are, we are not, we don't have a lot of, I mean, we don't, we're not near a big base or anything like that, but I know we have veterans, and I believe that they should be one of the special protected and receive the extra month of relocation assistance, which is where that was. The thing about inclusionary zoning, interestingly enough, although the state has, is working on that, we, I mean, let's, let's face it, we do have, in the place where we've really only built housing, we have inclusionary zoning, it's called the Downtown Precise Plan. We added that, we had it to begin with, and then it got taken away because of the RDA, went away, and then we brought it back, and we still have a 15%. It doesn't mean that within precise plans, as Mr. Aknin mentioned, moving forward, that we can't do in precise plans inclusionary, or that we can't work with developers to do that. So whereas we don't have it and we don't call it inclusionary zoning, we have that ability, and we have worked very successfully, including in the Downtown Precise Plan, to have that 15% set aside. So I think that that is still, that's still out there, we've worked with developers, and I think we can continue to work with developers. The one thing I, I'm a little concerned about the flexibility, I'm all for flexibility. What I want to make sure is that flexibility isn't used as, as a club. And by that, I mean, I don't, I mean, if, if the two of us are competing for an apartment, and upfront, I say that I'm willing to go to a month-to-month, or I'm willing to go to a six-to-month, and he says, I'm not willing to go to a year, I can tell you who's gonna get the apartment, I am. So I think we've got to be very careful with that flexibility. I get it, I love when, when we don't get in the way of good, healthy negotiations, and I'm all for that, because I think it's great, somebody may agree to a two-year, or a three-year, or a four-year lease, I think that's fabulous. But I think we've got to be very careful when we say, well, you could also get a month-to-month, because I could see, if we're not very careful with that, it will be used as a way to make decisions about who that's given to. I, I just know that will happen, and we'll be, again, without those lack of specific definitions, we'll be right back here. And the last thing is, is I'll be very interested to hear about the cost to Redwood City, because it is important, when we make these decisions, this is a very big and very complex city, and becoming more and more complicated, that budget that, you don't have to hold it up again, but that budget is a, is a great deal of complexity. And I think we, whether, we've got to make these decisions with our eyes wide open and make these decisions knowing exactly what it will cost the city when it comes to staff. So I'll look forward to that coming back, as well as how do we pay for that? This is affordable, this has worked in the area of affordable housing. So if you're interested whether there's a recommendation to use some, not all, but some affordable housing monies to pay for some of these items from a staff perspective, and I think we've got to look very carefully at that. With that, I appreciate the comments said by Vice Mayor Bain around rent control, he is 100% correct about the work that was done. We, you know, our HHTC, any, quite frankly, any board commissioner committee that doesn't do this full-time, we want to maximize their work, when you have seven people saying, you know, this is not something we want to take up and look at right now, I'd rather maximize their work around being effective, and this is a tremendous, this is extremely effective. We have not gotten this far in a long time, and I'm happy for, look forward to it coming back. So we'll look forward to it coming back in the future, so thank you. Okay. Item, hold on. 8B is, we're gonna receive a presentation on the California Cannabis Legislation Provide Direction on Proposed Actions for Redwood City. I believe this will be kind of a tag-team presentation between our city manager, Melissa Stevenson Diaz, and our city attorney, Veronica Ramirez, is that right? Perfect. I'm not gonna make any jokes, I'm just gonna allow you to start.
Honorable.
This is not a directional informational item, I'm supposed to read this.
Okay.
No formal action will be taken, but we will provide feedback as necessary.
Thank you, Mayor Seabert. Honorable mayor, members of the council, tonight we are here to discuss cannabis regulation. This report, like the mayor mentioned, will be jointly given by the city manager's office and the city attorney's office. I will provide a background on the current state of cannabis-related laws. I'll be talking about federal law, state law, and then we'll be distinguishing between medical and recreational cannabis. medical and recreational cannabis laws. And then, city manager Stevenson Diaz will walk you through the staff recommendations and the rationale behind those. All of this with the ultimate goal of receiving direction on the prohibition or regulation of personal and commercial cannabis regulation. Now, before we discuss California's changing legal framework, it's important to understand federal laws on cannabis. Cannabis is a scheduled, a Schedule I drug under the Federal Controlled Substance Act, meaning that cannabis activities allowed under state law are still prohibited by federal law. Now, in recent years, federal government had taken a hands-off approach on enforcement. In 2013, Deputy Attorney General James Cole issued a memo, providing that federal enforcement will happen only if the cannabis business poses a threat to the public welfare, such as when the business is part of other unlawful activity. This memo, coupled with Congress defunding federal enforcement in 2015, gave states and cities some level of certainty about their cannabis regulations, so long as their program addressed the public safety and health and welfare concerns of the Department of Justice. However, with the change in the federal administration, it is now unclear what the new position is or will be. That said, California is not alone in allowing cannabis. Currently, there are 29 states that allow for some use of cannabis. 21 states have legalized medical cannabis, and eight states have legalized cannabis for recreational use. In California, the legislature adopted the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act in 2015. This went into effect in January 2016. The Medical Cannabis Act legalized the use of cannabis for medical purposes and created a state regulatory and licensing system for medical cannabis. The medical cannabis licensing scheme must be fully implemented by January 1, 2018. In 2016, recently, past November, the voters adopted Proposition 64, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. Prop 64 legalized recreational cannabis activities, and also set forth a licensing framework for recreational commercial cannabis businesses, similar to the medical cannabis. The state will begin issuing licenses for these recreational uses by January 1, 2018 as well. So, they're both on parallel tracks to be implemented by January 1, 2018. Both of these acts recognize local entities' abilities to permit or prohibit cannabis businesses. But the city will want to have such regulations in place before that January 1 deadline. Overall, Prop 64 borrowed heavily from the Medical Cannabis Act. However, there are key differences. Where a local license is required in order for the state to issue a medical license, no local license is required under Prop 64. That means inaction by a city would be tacit approval. Second, where a city can ban all medical activities except personal use and transportation through its city, under Prop 64, the city cannot ban personal indoor cultivation either. Third, where under the medical cannabis system, a business can only hold up to two license types. Under Prop 64, there's no limit. Finally, where medical use and licensing is limited to those 18 or over, recreational use and licensing is limited to those 21 or over. Now, this past April, the Brown administration, I think, introduced its idea of wanting one regulatory system because of the complications that come with having this dual system. The Brown administration introduced a trailer bill that proposed major substantive changes with the intent of combining both the medical and the recreational regulations into one regulatory scheme. Now, the trailer bill went through several revisions, and the final version of the trailer bill, which was supported by the LOC C, the League of California Cities, was passed on June 15 by the legislature and is currently awaiting the governor's signature. Redwood City currently expressly prohibits medical cannabis distribution facilities in all zoning districts. Medical marijuana or medical cannabis deliveries, however, are allowed because Redwood City does not expressly prohibit it. And under the Medical Cannabis Act, it must be prohibited expressly in order to regulate. Redwood City has no other regulations and will want to have regulations in place again by January 1, 2018, in order to maintain control locally. What follows is the discussion of the general regulatory options available to the city with respect to the various cannabis-related activities. Cultivation is the growing and harvesting of the cannabis plant. I would break cultivation up into two categories, personal and commercial. For personal cultivation, California residents have the right to grow up to six cannabis plants per resident for personal consumption. The city can ban or allow and regulate personal outdoor cultivation. The city cannot ban personal indoor cultivation, but can place reasonable regulations on it. The city can ban or allow and regulate commercial cultivation, whether outdoor or indoor. Cultivation in general raises fire prevention, security, and odor concerns. In addition, commercial cultivation can cause impacts on water quality if fertilizers and pesticides are stored or applied improperly. Second is testing and manufacturing. Testing facilities will test cannabis and cannabis products for the concentration of cannabinoids and contamination of products. Manufacturing cannabis products can either involve the extraction of cannabinoids from the cannabis flowers, or the production of consumable goods from the cannabis extract. Testing and manufacturing raise fire prevention, security, and odor concerns. Third is distribution and retail. Distribution and retail are distinguished by who the end consumer of the product is. While a distributor procures, sells, and transports between different types of licensed entities, retail results in cannabis or cannabis products landing in the hands of the end user or customer. Distribution and retail raise security, loitering, nuisance, and odor concerns. Retail outlets may also cause conventional retail impacts, such as increased traffic and parking demand. Now, if the city permits local recreational or medical cannabis businesses, the city will want to consider whether to impose local taxes and fees on those businesses in addition to the state taxes and fees that businesses will already pay. Cities may impose taxes and fees on all uses. This includes any excise taxes, such as business license taxes, cultivation taxes, or manufacturing taxes. With one exception, no sales tax may be imposed on medical cannabis. Any new tax will require voter approval, majority approval for general, and two-thirds approval for special. And again, no local sales taxes may be imposed for medical. Now, smoking regulations. Cannabis may not be smoked in public places. Additionally, cannabis users may not smoke in places where smoking tobacco is prohibited. Finally, cities have local control and may prohibit smoking cannabis even in locations where smoking tobacco is permitted. Redwood City currently prohibits smoking in enclosed public places, such as restaurants, movie theaters, and offices. Staff is planning to present an ordinance to council in the next few months that will prohibit smoking in multifamily housing. To the extent the city prohibits smoking in multifamily housing or anywhere else, that prohibition will apply to cannabis unless it is specifically exempted by the council's With that, I'll turn it to city manager Diaz.
Thank you. So, this evening, we are not asking for your approval of any final action. We wanted to provide some grounding in what the city is able to do, and then use it as a launching pad for more public discussion, for more public input over the next several months, culminating then in recommendations for you to adopt later this fall. I did wanna talk a little bit about how we came up with the recommendations that we have before you this evening, as this is uncharted territory for all of us. So, first, we did what we would normally do, which is look at prior direction. And so, we, you know, certainly are aware of the direction the council has given in the past, which was that there not be any retail distribution of medical cannabis. So, as the city attorney noted, you've agreed that it was appropriate for delivery to occur for medical cannabis, but not for there to be a retail dispensary for medical cannabis. Secondly, we, we shared with you in the past that we had thought there would be some potential for a countywide approach, and there have been a number of working groups established under the auspices of the county. And we'll provide a little more detail here shortly, but the upshot of that work is, at this point, it appears that there's actually quite a wide variety of approaches that cities are taking. And so, while if there was a unified approach, we would likely want to recommend that, it appears right now that there is not consensus across the county about how to treat that. And I'll speak to that in just a little more detail. Today, we've actually heard almost nothing from, from the public about this, other than the vote and, and the proportion of voters here that supported it. So, we do think it's important to put this out for more information from, from the public, both the business and residential communities. We are mindful always, and I appreciated the comments tonight, about staff time and judicious use of staff time. So, one of the concerns that, that we, that have shaped the rationale for our discussion tonight is, really to try to assess, you know, should we spend a whole lot of time and energy on something which may or may not even come to pass? So, for example, it seems perhaps unlikely that we're going to be a great location for cultivation of commercial cannabis on a big scale. So, that being the case, you'll see, we're not recommending that we regulate that and that we spend a lot of staff time developing regulation inspection protocols, because it doesn't seem that that's a good land use here. So, again, part of our thinking is just, how should we best spend staff time and energy? We have been seeking information from other communities that are ahead of us in other states, and I'll share that the advice that we've, we've heard, particularly from Colorado, is that it is far easier to start on a very restrictive approach and then to gradually loosen it than it is to do the reverse. So, again, part of our thinking is to start small. And then last, because we do have concerns about the long-term fiscal health of the city, but also for parity when you compare to other kinds of commercial enterprises in the city for which we require business licenses, we think there's an appropriate consideration to be given in the next several months over potential revenue generation. So, in terms of other cities within the county, we've just grouped these into three categories. So, you see that, to date, three communities have just expressly prohibited and are not actively discussing having more regulations associated with cannabis businesses. Five have an interim ban, and then the remaining, I believe, eight or nine are studying some level of potential authorization for cannabis-related activity. So, for example, it's our understanding that Half Moon Bay, with their agricultural base, is considering whether commercial cultivation would be appropriate and under what circumstances. Pacific, I believe, at this time, is the only community that we're aware of that's actively discussing retail storefronts. So, not delivery, but, but actual physical locations where people could buy recreational cannabis. And, and South San Francisco, in the recent past, has been studying whether the extraction process would be appropriate there. You know, I'm sure they have a large industrial base, and they have some, also a relationship with food product production. So, perhaps that will be something that, that they would consider. So, so what we're seeing is, again, not a countywide approach, but really something that's customized to the particular circumstances in those community and, and really their particular economies it's turning out. So, with that, the staff recommendations for initial consideration this evening and then for further outreach are as follows. So, first would be that personal cultivation would remain limited as it is under state law at six plants. So, we are recommending that the council not start with something greater than state law allows. Additionally, we would like to spend a little more time assessing whether or not we're comfortable with whether or not existing fire and building codes would be sufficient in circumstances where people might be growing indoors. And so, we might wanna come back to you with some recommendations for additional restrictions or regulations if there is indoor growing going on. Additionally, in terms of outdoor production, if that's something that the city council was willing to consider for an individual property owner, at a minimum, we'd suggest that the regulation prohibit the plants from being visible outside the property. That would help address the concern that has been identified in other communities around security for what is a valuable crop. Additionally, the lower number of plants that would be allowed is intended to help address odor concerns, although we should point out it may not completely eliminate those. On the recreational cannabis side, we would recommend, at this stage, until we have any other information that would be helpful, that the council would consider banning commercial cultivation, manufacturing, testing, retail, and distribution. And also consider a regulated recreational delivery. Some of the kinds of regulations that could be appropriate for delivery that we do not currently have in place, even for the medical cannabis delivery right now, could be for us to know which companies are delivering in Redwood City. Currently, we have nothing in place to tell us, or no ability to restrict which companies come into Redwood City, how often, how much product they have, whether it's sealed or loose, so whether there's cash involved, or it's an all-charge business. We currently have no way to regulate that with medical cannabis. If council were to allow delivery of recreational cannabis, we would suggest that we really should be having more regulations that would address some of those kinds of concerns. And then, on the medical cannabis side, assuming that you wish to continue allowing medical delivery, again, we think that it'd be appropriate to have similar kinds of restrictions as could be applied to recreational delivery to, again, address the concerns that can exist around security and making sure that we actually know who's doing business in our community. All of these potentially would be revisited in 2019, so these would get us through 2018 so that we had some experience with this fairly limited approach. However, you could certainly have a longer timeframe or revisit that at any point if you chose. In terms of taxes and fees, we think it's appropriate to consider applying our business license fee to all cannabis businesses, whether it's medical or not. We certainly require business licenses for Bevmo. We consider them for, you know, any kind of drugstore that exists. So, it seems very appropriate and not cost prohibitive to require that. If the council ultimately is willing to consider recreational cannabis sales, whether it's delivery or a storefront, I think at some point it'd be appropriate to really consider whether their sales tax is appropriate on that activity as we would on, again, alcohol or other activity. We do think a robust public outreach approach is, is very appropriate, and so we would suggest an approach similar to that which we undertook recently with the update of our development fees. So, we had a city website, we had a number of electronic communications, we had a survey of residents, and then we also did outreach. So, we would share as much as possible with neighborhood groups, with homeowners groups, with people in the community and with the business community, really to get feedback from a broad array of people who might have opinions on this. And so, with that, we're open out to your questions, and we'll attempt to answer them.
I do have two speakers cards, so I'm gonna go to the, yes, I do. I'm gonna go to the speakers cards real quick. This is not a public hearing, but I do have a speaker's card from, I believe it's Montserrat Garcia, is that correct? That'll be followed by Edith Kabusle? And if you could just queue up while she's speaking behind her, that would be great. I'm gonna be ready. Go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Montserrat Garcia, one of the coaches for the Tobacco Education Coalition, and also a program manager with Youth Leadership Institute, or YLI. YLI works with youth throughout San Mateo County on a variety of issues, and we see that smoke-free environments and smoke-free multi-unit housing is an important issue today. As part of the, and as part of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition, we're committed to uplifting the voices of tenants and young people who are mostly affected by second-hand smoke outcomes. It's important to talk about the connections between this marijuana conversation and the tobacco conversation because of the second-hand smoke exposure that is tied. And also, a lot... And also, a lot that prohibits tobacco smoking in certain places would also prohibit marijuana smoke. So young people conducted a survey last year, public opinion survey here in Redwood City, and here are some of the findings. So more than half of the survey population support making an entire building non-smoking. Ninety-three percent of survey respondents agreed that breathing second-hand smoke is harmful. Sixty-five percent of survey respondents experienced some degree of smoke from neighboring units, and 53% live with a chronic disease or illness, which is also an outcome of having second-hand smoke in shared spaces. So young people throughout San Mateo County have been advocates in support of a smoke-free multi-unit housing, including in South San Francisco, Brisbane, San Bruno, Burlingame, and now here in Redwood City. So as young people grow up sharing space and air, it's important to have a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy, as referenced as one of the recommendations in the staff report in page seven. That also includes both cannabis and e-cigarettes as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Edith Kabuslay, followed by Roe v. Antonio.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Edith Kabuslay. I'm with the San Mateo County Health System, the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Division, and within that Community Health Promotion Unit. We oversee the AOD prevention work of San Mateo County. I wanted to share with you, and I sent around a copy of a survey that we conducted last summer in San Mateo County, and wanted to share with you the results that were specific to Redwood City. So as I mentioned, the survey was conducted last summer, 2016. There were over 4,000 respondents throughout San Mateo County. We did paper pencil surveys as well as online platforms throughout the county, and over 400 respondents were from Redwood City, and so we conducted a separate analysis of the Redwood City results of the survey. And what you see are the difference in the amount of concern that the community in Redwood City, as well as in San Mateo County, have about use of marijuana between adults and youth. And what you will see on that, the bottom left-hand side, is that youth's use of marijuana is a significant concern here for residents of Redwood City. On the bottom right, you will see that the question asked about the last time that the person used marijuana. And if you take a look at the golden rod, as well as the blue wedges of that pie, you will see that there is a 25% current use of marijuana in Redwood City among adults. And then the second page on the top right, the question asked whether or not residents would consider using recreational marijuana if it was legalized for recreational purposes. And there are 35% of Redwood City respondents out of 416 who said yes. And then the last table that you're provided there on the second page on the top right is the questions around policy. If marijuana became legal, would you approve or disapprove? And then there are a series of policy questions, and I provided for you the answers for many of those questions. The two that I wanted to bring to your attention is the fact that there is strong support for a retail license program in Redwood City, as well as for policies that would move stores who sell marijuana, if you were to choose to have them, to have them at least 1,000 feet from youth-sensitive areas such as schools, community colleges, parks, and such locations. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. If you could provide this to us via email through our clerk, I can't read this.
A copy was sent to the city manager's office.
Okay, so if you can provide that to us via email, because I, even with my glasses on, I can't get them far enough or whatever you call it. So that'd be great, thank you. Thank you for the information. With that, next speaker, Roe v. Antonio.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Roe v. Lynn Antonio with California Apartment Association. We are a trade organization to represent rental property owners and operators, and a large number of our members actually have properties here in Redwood City. I'm here today to speak on the proposal regarding prohibiting smoking in multifamily communities. I wanted to share with you the good news that an overwhelming majority of renters and potential renters actually prefer rental housing that have a smoke-free housing. And so, given that information, our owners and operators are responding to market demands. And more and more owners are adopting completely 100% smoke-free, and for the ones who are allowing smoking, they're phasing them out. So our office is constantly getting calls regarding what are the local laws on how to comply with a smoking policy and best practices on how to ban smoking and multifamily units. So should the city move forward with any type of smoking policy, whether it's tobacco, marijuana, medical marijuana, we do ask you to be consistent. And as what the mayor was saying at the previous subject, be consistent and be very clear on the definition. The success of any law or ordinance program really hinges on how well you do the education and outreach, and we want you to know that we are your partners. We want to help educate the public, as well as all the property owners in Redwood City, but we can't do that if there's gray areas of interpreting the law. So our members call us, asking us, what are the frequently asked questions? Can you provide one for us? We have a dedicated helpline to ask how to comply with local laws, and we can't provide that service unless we fully understand these ordinance and the provisions. So our ask is that, whatever you do, we do include us in that, and, you know, you'll be following the steps of what other peninsula cities have done with their smoking ordinances where they've come to us and asked us for our service. You know, most recently with South San Francisco, Burlingame, and San Mateo, where we provided them with some of the easier ways to implement it and make sure that members are in full compliance within a short period of time. Like I said, we do pride ourselves in our members being compliant to all local laws, so if you give us the tools that, if you give us the tools, we will be able to help you. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I don't need to close it. So with that, I'll go to any questions or comments on this item. Is there any? Councilwoman Mazur? You want to, Councilwoman Borgans? Okay, good. Vice Mayor Vane?
I'll be very brief. I agree with the more restrictive approach going into this, and I appreciate that recommendation.
Councilwoman Howard?
Thank you. I also agree with the more restrictive approach. I like the way that you clearly laid it out. And I also want to thank the people who came here to discuss the work they're doing in the tobacco coalition and working with young people and helping them not smoke, as well as going in and talking to people about not selling to minors. I know you do a lot of good work in the community, but I think you're right. I think we have to be very consistent, and that will include marijuana smoke. And whatever we pass for tobacco, and I'm glad this is coming to us fairly soon, because we've talked about it a great deal, and I'm real excited about getting that legislation going. But we do have to be consistent, and we have to be very clear. So I want to thank Roe v. Lynn for emphasizing that so clearly, because you're absolutely right. We're all in this together, and we all want to be helping each other, educate the public on why we're doing what we're doing. We don't want any gray areas when it comes to having these discussions. We want it really clear so we protect ourselves and protect our communities. So I agree with the recommendations that are made, and I think 2019 is fine. If you had something that you wanted to bring to us sooner, I'm sure you would, but I think right now, I think this, the way it's laid out is restrictive and clear and good.
Vane. Councilwoman Mazur?
So I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach. Not that I think that we shouldn't be more restrictive. And by the way, thanks to my public health people, good to see you guys. I guess, you know, if I think about the delivery versus retail location as an issue, I guess I'm really not clear how we're going to regulate delivery in any way that is realistic. I mean, we can tell businesses, I don't know, maybe I just don't know. There's a way, I mean, how are we going to know if a car's coming into the city delivering marijuana to somebody's house? I feel like we have a much better opportunity to regulate if we had, if we had a retail storefront. I don't know where we have a good location for one, so I'm not saying it's the right thing to do at the moment. I completely agree with the recommendation to have them a specific distance from schools or any location serving kids, including after-school programs, et cetera, parks. But I just, I don't, I don't know how we're going to regulate delivery. So maybe you can share with me how we would.
Well, we have certainly not exhaustively looked at this, so that's a part of what we would need to do over the next several months. One concept that I think some communities are considering is, if you're willing to allow one warehouse from which all deliveries serving this community would have to come and limit the number of companies working out of that, then potentially you could have constraints on what would be delivered and how that would all be operated. We're not at all prepared to recommend that this evening, but that is an approach that avoids what I think we have some concerns about regarding any kind of retail storefront.
So what specifically is different about a retail storefront than delivery?
Well, I think that the possibility of people congregating is different. I think the concerns around our ability to have a retail storefront that would be avoiding the use of cash could be different. I think size issues could matter in terms of the size of a retail storefront versus what would be needed to support a delivery service. Again, we've not looked at it exhaustively, and importantly, I think we are not hearing from business saying, "We want a retail storefront here," but we do know deliveries are happening here now. So that seems perhaps the place to really focus.
Yeah, I mean, I think you provided us with an extensive list of delivery services that are, that say they deliver to Redwood City. So how much they're delivering, we don't know, right? Because we haven't talked to them, I assume.
Correct.
So can I just ask, Edith, on your slide, does it, does it say 77% would approve of retail? I won't, I won't spend, I won't spend a lot of time, I just want to know if that's what this particular slide says, if I'm reading it correctly. It's not, sorry.
For that specific question, if you were to allow retail businesses, there would be 77% of the people who responded to the survey who would support you licensing those retailers?
As opposed to being unlicensed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's great, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. So for me, if I look at these recommendations, I absolutely think we should look at business license fees, considering local sales tax. I do, I agree, if we're going to have it in the community, I want it to be a revenue generation, I would like to see some revenue come from it. And I agree that we would want to align whatever we do with recreational and medical, to the extent possible. And, and I think it makes sense to look at zoning, et cetera, to understand the impacts of lights and all the kinds of things that have to go along with personal cultivation. Again, and I think this is part of what you're saying, is you don't even know really, like, what, to the extent we would be able to really enforce some of that, given the six-plant rule might not be, the cost benefit of that might not be worth the time. But I, for, I guess I would like to see a better understanding of what regulated recreational delivery would mean, how it would really be regulated. I understand that you've given me some examples. I still have a little bit of a difficult time sort of understanding how that, how realistic that is in terms of regulation. And I do, I do think if we were, appreciating that nobody said that they want to have a retail business in Redwood City, but if they did, I do think we have a lot of tools at our disposal around zoning, that where we locate it, what the size is, those kinds of things that we might be concerned about. We can control them to a greater degree, in my opinion, but through some zoning regulations of that kind of a, of that kind of a business. So I may be the only one who cares about, who wants to know more about that, but those are sort of my comments for the moment.
Councilwoman G?
Thank you, Mayor Seaver. This is, it's going to get complicated, there's no question about it. And I have had the fortunate opportunity to serve on the League of California Cities Public Safety Committee for the past three years. And as Deputy Chief Kirby knows, it's been on the agenda, not only at the League of Cities, but at the Police Chiefs Association, trying to figure out what to do. And if there's any lessons learned from Colorado and Washington, and I'm not sure I would use the phrase you used, "Mr. Isn't Start Small," but the theme that we heard from Washington, Colorado, number one, make sure your rules are in place first. And number two, you can always ease back on the rules, but it's really hard to tighten them up after lessons learned. And so I believe that's, that was the intent of that bullet point, is to be restrictive in the beginning, because they can always back off as lessons learn. But the imploring message was, get the rules in place before it starts, because you'll never catch up. And those two states struggled to catch up with the industry that just took off when the voters said, "We want to make it available to our residents." With, with the council direction or recommendations from staff, gosh, you know, indoor cultivation, I know we have to allow up to six plants, but I think we also need to make sure that we're thoughtful about our city's resources. You know, we have our deputy chief police chief here, our fire chief, as well as enforcement on the building code side needs to be ready. A good friend of mine leased a townhome in Hayward, and unfortunately, he wasn't paying attention until the tenant left. It was a three-story townhome that was completely trashed because they were growing cannabis on all three levels. He spent thousands of dollars putting everything back together. And I don't know, I don't think any of us knows what's going to happen after January, whether it's going to be six, you know, and maybe it grows to eight and maybe 10, because it's self-regulating. And maybe I can't count to six, so I'll just put a whole bunch in and see what happens. So I think we just need to be thoughtful about how that affects our city resources. When we talk about outdoor, it reminds me of when Mayor Seaver and I were walking precincts one day, one afternoon, and I can't remember the neighborhood, but we knew people were growing it outside. You could not avoid seeing it, smelling it, that the plants were growing. And I'm, I'm not really open to having plants grown outside on people's property. I'm okay with it inside, but I'm not sure I'm ready to open up private property for growing cannabis. Recreational cannabis, medical cannabis, I'm, they should be aligned. Again, it goes back to the simplicity part. I mean, how the hell do we know it's recreational versus medical when it's being delivered or grown? They need to be the same. However, with regard to delivery, this is more of a question that if, if I'm running a cab company, don't I have to get a license here in Redwood City?
Not here in Redwood City, but cities do have requirements for cabs and do have regulations.
So my, where I'm going to is, if we're going to allow, and we already do allow delivery, and it's sort of like some of those ride-sharing, we're not given the data, maybe a better way to do this is to provide or require a license for delivery of cannabis in Redwood City. So at least we can know how many drivers are doing this, how many companies are doing this. We may not know that they're delivering to 12 homes a day each, but at least we can find out, in an anecdotal way, how many licensed medical, how many licensed cannabis delivery drivers are coming into Redwood City and have applied, at least for an annual permit or a six-month permit or something. And that would be at least some revenue, as well as some information. And I'm okay with being restrictive right now till we learn more about what's going on. And I'm very pleased that, I think we're at the tipping point where we do need to bring the smoking ordinance to council. While I don't like intruding into private lives, I think this just crossed the tipping point. And I do think we need to partner with the apartment association in other cities to bring that best practice regulation and be really consistent. We just had the item before that talked about large apartment building owners versus the mom and pop, and we've just got to be, we've got to make it easy for everybody to know what the rules are, great clarity, and what is going to be enforced. what the rules are, great clarity, and what is going to be enforced.
Councilwoman Borganz, yeah?
So, thank you, Councilmember G. That was pretty much where I was going. I do agree with being more restrictive, and I'd like to go on record and thank Rovi for saying how great a partner you will be in helping get that information out from all cities, because that's exactly what we need, another, another opportunity to get the word out. So it's nice to know that your organization is actually doing that, and that you're having strong conversations about the smoking and how to phase it in. That was the first time I've actually heard that conversation, where property owners are talking about phasing out the, the smoking rather than just 100% ban. There is a process and a discussion taking place. So thank you, because it is that we are gonna be having that conversation. I do agree with the recommendations brought forth by staff. I think they're, they're great. I, I do, I find the conversation interesting with Councilmember Mazur. I, I wouldn't want to slam the door on the opportunity, so I think the conversation is worth having at some point. And then when we talk about licensing, and I thank staff for helping me get through some of my questions earlier, because it's one thing to have the company license that is providing the product into our community, but now we're looking at potential of independent contractors driving for them, and that's a different process. That's, you know, I, I'm an independent contractor in my business, and I am required to have a business license in the city of Redwood City. So that's a whole different discussion, I think. So, but it's something that could eventually happen if this does, you know, a huge delivery opportunity. It's an entrepreneurial moment, and maybe they would be independent. So that's a conversation that could go forward.
Councilwoman Mazur?
Sorry. I'm just, I just actually did have a thought, sort of to go back on what I said before, "How would we know?" And actually thinking back on a presentation that we had at the Peninsula Division of the League of Cities from a company called Weed Maps. And so I think there might be, I know, but that is actually their name. Thank you for showing us. Anyway, I just think perhaps there's some opportunity to partner with them, you know. So to my question of like, "How do we know who's delivering here?", we can guess based on what they have on their website and what they say, but Weed Maps actually tracks it, and so they sort of, and they're a locator service, so I think it's worth going back to them and talking to their public policy person about how we might, how we might look at that. And I realize that there's one piece that you had up, that's not on this slide, but you had up there around community input, where you had suggested similar process to what we've used for some other things, and I really want to support that. I know San Carlos did that. I'd like us to see if a little bit more of an extensive process, which we do just by the nature of how we do our community outreach. But I, I really appreciate you putting that up there, and I really would like to hear from the community. This survey's a good start, but now that it's, we're at a different time, and I, and I want to know what our community thinks.
Councilwoman Howard?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I, I, what I'm reading here is that we're going to continue to allow medical delivery and develop regulations similar for recreational delivery, but I think your recommendation also says that they will be applying for a business license fee, and you're going to do research on how to get all that information. So I, I know when Councilmember G said what he did, I, I thought that was in the recommendation. So we will be requiring business license, business licenses of both delivery of recreational or medicational, excuse me, medical, either one, it wouldn't matter, they'd be treated the same as far as a business license.
That's correct. And it's also correct that the mechanism of tracking either one of them is something we still have to figure out.
Exactly. And I agree that we should start very carefully and make our rules very clear, and so that's why I would say let's start with delivery and, and not go those extra steps into talking about storefronts and things like that. I think that's way ahead of what we're ready to handle, quite frankly. I want us to start real small and be able to handle what we're doing, but business license fees and certainly looking into what kind of sales tax can be charged, I think, is very reasonable. As far as outdoor plantings, I, I guess it would be interesting to see what other cities are doing about that, who have smaller plots of land as we do in Redwood City, because houses being so close together, the smell is a problem. That is gonna be an enforcement problem. We'll be getting calls on that. So we should see if other communities around us are thinking about that or planning to do similar, where they have a, either restriction of doing it or, or not doing any outdoor planting at all.
Okay. Make a couple of comments. It's, it's been said many times, but we, you know, all the time, I mean, we, we don't deal with just about any fee in the city without looking at how we compare to other cities. And I think this is a time where we ultimately really need to learn from others. I would rather not be the example of mistakes made. To that point, I, I think a couple of things. I, I think where this goes for me initially is to make sure that we don't run down a road that ultimately has the rights of someone because of this, causing detriment to the rights of others. And there's a couple of areas where I think I would pull back on this initially, because we can always add it later. One is, is outdoor. It is, I, I just think it, it brings up property value issues, the access, depending upon the yard, is, it's very easy to access. If you live in my neighborhood, you just walk into my yard. The, the access to that, I, I just think that that needs to pull back until we really understand what we mean by outdoor. The other thing that I look at, and I, just glancing out at, at our, at Chief Mop, and it's gotta be a huge percentage of residential fires are electrically related. I, I don't know what percentage, but I gotta believe it's very high. We, we don't burn a lot of wood in this, in this community and those kinds of things. That's a huge concern to me, and I think, I think we're, going forward with this with six plants is, is okay at this point. I think we've really gotta figure out a way, and I, and I really, and not that we wouldn't, because we're very good about this in this city with the department heads, but work very, very closely with, with, on that one, especially with fire and certainly with the police department, about how do we deal with that? Because let me tell you something, you know, the other thing we know is a fire gets going in a house, and the next thing, it's the neighborhood's problem, and the next thing, it's the next-door neighbor's problem, where, you know, where the, the fire has spread. And quite frankly, I don't want to send any of our men and women of our fire department into a burning building because someone overloaded electrical circuits to grow cannabis. It, it just, I mean, we have enough of those situations as it is. Electrical problems, I, I don't think people realize the, the way that that can happen very, very quickly with something as simple as an overloaded extension cord of the wrong gauge or something like that. It happens in an instant, and it, and it can cause, it can cause death not only to the people living there, but to people, to people coming into that. I, I would look at that. I would be much more comfortable with that. I know we don't have it, and I, no one send me nasty grams about this. We don't have a, a, we don't have a residential sprinkler ordinance in this city, and I'd be much more comfortable if we did with this, but we don't. And so I just think it's something where we've gotta, I, I will beat that one, that that's as far as I'm gonna beat it, but, but I think it's a very major concern. The second thing for me is this issue of revenue. We have seen in two, including tonight, and we've seen in a significant meeting we had earlier, that we rarely recover our cost in our fees. I mean, it just, we, we don't, and I get that, that's our city, we do that. I want to be very careful when we're talking about this revenue, that as we begin to tax things, that things that we're allowing, that we are covering that, because I'm afraid we, we start talking about, "Oh, we can get all this tax revenue." That's great, but what is it actually costing the city? Because I don't think this is a situation where I, I can honestly sit before others and say, "Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's okay, it's only costing us a couple hundred thousand dollars to allow this, because the fees are not covering that." So I think we've gotta do a really good job in this case with, with cost recovery. So look forward to something coming back to start small. We can, we can sit back and learn from others. There'll be plenty to learn from people around us, and I appreciate that approach. So, yes.
So maybe I could just clarify, because I think I heard at least three, but maybe four of you say you're not particularly interested in outdoor personal cultivation. And if that's the case, we don't need to even spend time writing it.
Okay. Okay, good. I think you got, okay. All right, with that, this will be coming back, and appreciate the comments made. I, I am gonna repeat them about the multi-unit housing, definitely something we're committed to, we'll get, working on it, and, and we'll do that and work with the Tri-County Apartment Association on that, because I know they've got some good examples of that. So with that, we're moving on to item 8C. I see Ms. Lockhart coming forward. I know it's probably a very robust staff report.
Can we just skip the presentation and go straight to action?
I, I, she waited all this time.
I will keep it brief.
I'd like to introduce our human resources manager, Leah Lockhart, to the podium. You're on.
All right, thank you. Mayor Seabert and city council members, tonight I am presenting the recommended updates to the city's salary and exec, salary plan and executive summary of benefits. Just by way of context, adjustments to executive compensation are done on a fiscal year basis, and consistent with council's compensation philosophy, we take into consideration cost of living, labor market trends, as well as the city's financial outlook. And our goal is to maintain a competitive compensation package, to attract and retain talent, and to do so in a fiscally sound manner. So before I get into the recommendations, I do want to cover just some context on one of the recommendations that we have. In order to address the challenge of rising pension costs, one of the strategies we've implemented in the past few years is to increase employee contributions to pension. And this is also known as cost sharing, so employees are paying an additional amount towards pension to offset the city's costs. And as you can see from this graph, we've been very aggressive with this strategy. We are the highest compared to our benchmark cities. And so this has, has helped us in offsetting our pension costs. However, the downside, if we're too far ahead of the pack, is maintaining our competitive level of a total compensation package. So if we are too far ahead of the pack, we are essentially having to keep up in other ways, so raising salaries or other benefits. So after looking at this and doing a little bit of study of it, last year, we reduced that pension contribution by 3%, just to be a little bit closer to where other cities are at, and we are recommending an additional 2% reduction, and as you can see, we would still be one of the highest cities in the area. Just another perspective on this is how we, how the executive management group compares to our other labor groups on pension contributions. They are the highest, and if we reduce by 2%, that would put the executives on par with our mid-management groups. So that would alleviate any concerns around equity and also avoid any disincentive to promote to a higher position. So to summarize the changes that are recommended in the resolution that's before you, the 2% reduction in cost sharing would apply to our miscellaneous or our non-safety members and only those in the classic pension tiers. We do have some in our new member tier, which is their third tier, which I will get to in another bullet, but this would be the classic members that we would reduce the contribution for. And the, along with that, we're also recommending a 1% cost of living adjustment. Just to give you a perspective on that, most of our other groups received a 3% increase, so this is essentially a net increase of 3% consistent with our other groups. And that's slightly below the Bay Area cost of living indexed at this time. So going on to our new members, our new CalPERS members, we're also recommending an additional cost of living adjustment for these employees. And this is really because they did not see the benefit last year or with this current recommendation of getting a reduction in their pension contributions. They're already somewhat lower, and that's because they have a lower pension benefit. So this is the equivalent value in terms of the city's cost that we would be offering as a cost of living adjustment to those employees. And it's not a one-to-one ratio, so that's why you get the weird numbers of 1.7 and 4.2. And that covers two years for the people who have been here for two years or longer at the 4.2 level, and one year for the 1.7 level. And finally, we're also recommending adjustments for our police executive ranks. And similar to what we did last year, we've had some restructuring in our police department at the management ranks. We ended up with some issues related to compaction, so salaries at multiple levels being too close together. And so we decided over two years, we're gonna get them back at a 10% alignment, so that each classification is 10% above their subordinates. We're not there yet. This is another step towards that differential, and the goal is to get there by 2018. So the, these are a series of adjustments incrementally, getting that space between those, those three levels. And in terms of the other recommended changes that are part of this resolution and our salary plan, we do have one change to the GIS coordinator classification, and that is to reclassify that position to GIS manager, and that was a result of a study that was conducted earlier this year, looking at comparable cities. As you know, our GIS program has grown significantly, and we've added additional staffing. So as such, the position itself that oversees that function has grown in its level of responsibility. And looking at other similar, other cities of similar scope and size, the GIS title, GIS manager title and the additional salary increase looked like the appropriate level that we're recommending. And finally, we do have some adjustments to a series of classifications that we use for our non-regular employees, which we call contract and casual employees. These are employees that are non-permanent, they work on a temporary or hourly basis. We have a broadbanded range for those positions that has been static for many, many years, and we're finding that the, the, the salaries are starting to outgrow the ranges that were set there, and so we want to update those and make them current, consistent with our regular employee classifications. So those are being increased between 14 and 25%. And I do want to mention that that won't apply to any current employee's salary, that's just growing the range so that it's aligned more appropriately. And so with that, those are the recommendations before you in this resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or council action? Take a motion.
Mayor Seabert would like to move that the council adopt a resolution amending the city's classification salary plan to reclassify all the positions in the staff report, et cetera, et cetera.
Motion to second. Lights are off. Voting yes, but our lights off. We take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Borganz? Councilmember G?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mazur?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bain?
Yes.
Mayor Seabert?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
I could have predicted that. Thank you. Okay, moving on to council member reports of conferences, or I don't have any, I don't think I have any committee reports. Oh, okay, I do have a couple of things that I need to deal with. One, spoke with Councilmember Mazur after last meeting, did a little research back to when, 2009, when I was elected, the finance committee was three people. It was actually Vice Mayor Bain and I and Mayor Ira at the time. So I've added, at her request, Councilmember Mazur is the third member to the finance committee to be working with them, but specifically on minimum wage. Thank you. I think, I think Mr. Jaffy's gone, but he had some information on minimum wage. We are gonna be working on that. Also, at our last meeting, Mohamed Saftar was appointed to the Planning Commission. He then, because of that, stepped off the El Camino Real Advisory Committee. Because he was my appointment to the advisory committee, I have replaced him and appointed Mike Smith, gentleman Mike Smith, to the El Camino Real Advisory Committee, so the remainder of their work and presentation to the council that are becoming so, I've done that. And we do have the South Bayside Waste Management, the SBWMA. Councilwoman Aguirre has served for many years on that, but is...
Councilwoman Aguirre has served for many years on that, but is, there's a meeting coming up, I mean, not just for this meeting, but typically, we, we don't need an alternate, but we do, specifically for a meeting, and then you would stay as an alternate, but do you know when that meeting is? I, I know.
Twenty-second, but let me verify that.
I believe it's July 22nd. What day, what day do they meet? Does anybody, it is, it's a very important meeting, it's an important vote.
Well, the 22nd is a Saturday, so it's probably not that.
That's my daughter's birthday. It's actually a, it's an afternoon meeting, I think about 1:00, 2:00. From the one time I went, they met at the San Carlos Library. I, I don't know that it's not, so let me, I, I can only do this once, or we're going to miss it, because our next meeting is after that, so if it's, okay, great. So if you can connect with Councilwoman Aguirre to make sure you're up to speed on what will be before the agenda, that would be great. And Ms. Thurman, I believe that there's paperwork that needs to come from me, to me to sign, so if you want to email it to me, I'll sign it and scan it back or do something like that. So that'd be great, thank you. Okay, with that, Vice Mayor Bain?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that Councilmember Borgans and I had the opportunity to end a public safety night last week hosted by the Elcles Lodge, where some of Redwood City's public safety members were represented. So from the fire department, Josh Williams, Lucas Golden, and Brian Stich all received awards, so thank you. And then from the police department is Officer Tren and Officer Orozco. I will spare you the stories, which I'm sure you all hear at a later date, but it was, it was a very nice event.
Thank you. Councilwoman Howard?
Mayor Seibert, I know Councilwoman Aguirre will not be at the MTC meeting on Wednesday, and I understand there's going to be some important voting going on regarding water transit and how it applies to regional measure three, and if Redwood City will be included in that legislation that they're going to be recommending to our assembly. So I don't know if an alternate is allowed to go, but could we find out if someone can be appointed as an alternate to go in her place? We've never had this problem, as far as I know, but it's pretty important this Wednesday, and I just found out that she will not be at the meeting on Wednesday to vote.
Okay. If, I can ask staff to research that. I, it's not a, just to be very clear, it's not a city appointment, so the decision wouldn't be by me anyways. It would be that the council of cities would have to convene and appoint an alternate, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought. CCG has alternates, but I.
I understand that.
Yeah, so I didn't know if they possibly did.
It's, I know for a fact it's not, it's not one of my appointments, so there's not anything I can do, but we can research it and see what the council of cities says. It would be up to the council, but we can check into it. Okay. City manager update.
Just two quick things. At your last council meeting, we talked a little bit about events downtown and kind of the balance of events. I just wanted to share with you that last week we received notice that Redwood City's summer concert series was recognized as the best free concert series in the entire Bay Area by San Francisco Magazine, and so our staff received that recognition last week, and we're pretty proud of them for all the work that goes into producing so many events over the course of the summer. So I know you all have the opportunity to enjoy those, but it's really great to have that kind of recognition outside as well. And Councilmember Borgans, it's July 27th, so we'll follow up on the, on the SBWMA board.
And does that still work? Okay. Okay. Find out, because again, we don't have a meeting before, well, actually, we, no, yeah, we do have a meeting a couple of days before that, but I'd be a little bit late. So, okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, that city attorney, any report from closed session?
Nothing, thank you.
Perfect. And with that, I believe Councilmember G will be adjourning in memory tonight of Coach Jim Liggett.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Seibert. I'd like to ask council and our staff and our community to adjourn this evening in memory and honor of Coach Jim Liggett. It's amazing, since I went to Carlmont High School, remember Coach Liggett, Coach Kovis, Coach Stogner, and many others from my time there. But as importantly, Coach Jim Liggett was the softball coach at Carlmont, and he coached my two sisters, who were both pitchers, in the girls' softball team. He passed away earlier, it's still June, earlier this month, on, on early June, and it's just amazing, after 41 years of coaching, he was the winniest coach in California's history with 1,009 wins. He had just turned 76 in April, and at the time he took over the program, the girls' softball team, they shared uniforms with the school's basketball and volleyball programs, and they didn't even have their own facilities. And so 1,000-plus games later, they were recognized for their success, and what he did, not only as a coach, but as a father to many girls that came through the program, as a mentor, and he kept in touch with many of the girls he coached. He went to their weddings, he met their husbands, met their kids, and he was just a great influence. He was that profound of an influence on all the young girls that he coached for those many years. His replacement coach at Carlmont was Coach Giuliani, hopefully I said that right, and he met Coach Liggett when he was coaching his oldest daughter, Danielle, on the varsity softball roster in 2011, when she was a freshman. Like I said, he built the program from scratch, and he was very proud of the program that he built. The athletic director at Carlmont, Patrick Smith, called Liggett "an icon who has left his imprint throughout the school." Quote, "When a guy like that passes, he just takes so much of the history of the school with him. You can ask him pretty much about anything. He knew where it was, and where it came from, and who that was. You talk about softball, but he coached football. Before their offices got remodeled, there were a lot of team photos, he coached like freshman basketball, girls' basketball, many, many sports." The best thing I can say that, Coach Messina, the football coach at Carlmont, wrote in a Facebook post, "Rest in peach, rest in peace, Coach Liggett. We're going to work even harder to return your program to greatness. God bless your family. On behalf of the council, on behalf of the Redwood City community, Coach Liggett, thank you for what you did. Rest in peace, you will be missed."
Thank you. I had the opportunity to know Coach Liggett for the last 20 years, and he was much more than a coach, he was an incredible man, so we adjourned in his honor. Thank you.